Okay, good morning. Welcome to the September ninth School Board Work Session. Thank you for being here. Madam Superintendent, whenever you're ready, the floor is all yours.
Good morning, thank you. Good morning, everyone. The first item we have before us this morning, we have policy updates. Ms. Dodge?
We'll let Jason do the policy.
He moved very quickly.
He understands the concept of line of fires.
Okay, well, while it's doing great things, this morning we have a set of policy updates that were brought forward by staff. And I don't have it in front of me right now, so I can't read them to you, but there are five of them.
Okay. This one has more than enough, probably.
Yeah. The staff ones aren't coming up yet, but the Neola updates, there are just kind of a long list of those. Several of those are the remaining of the school's security package that we're finishing up, that we brought to you last time. And then there are just a variety of different ones that Neola has recommended.
Any questions, Mr. Townsend?
On the ESSA one and the eligible, the quote eligible for state certification unquote, versus the strike through, what's the practical difference between what they're striking through and what we're adding? What's the implication of that? It's the thirty-one twenty, employment of instructional staff.
That's the staff.
That's the staff.
She was on Neola right now.
Yeah.
Oh, sorry.
Neola policies.
If I remember, that that policy is just language that was required under ESSA regarding how we're training.
It's fine with the government to do that. Yeah.
Hold on, I got it now. Employment of instructional staff.
Wendy, are you on Neola? Are you still on Neola?
You can, you can, you can do Neola, we can come back to that.
Okay.
Because you were, I think you were all on Neola.
All right. Going back to the Neola policies. Okay. Are there any questions on the Neola policies?
Ms. Sellers?
Are all of these to do with state or federal statutes? Or they're just some Neolas recommending that aren't to comply with statute, you know?
Like the parent organizations, they're deleting that policy and combining it with another policy that wasn't as a requirement of statute or rules that have changed, but just a kind of a general cleanup of.
Because we had it in two spots.
And Ms. Matthews had been recommending for a long time, so.
Okay. But the rest of them aren't to comply with?
Yes.
Laws and statutes?
Yes. For instance, fifty-two hundred was an actual change in the attendance statute. Bender preference is a, basically a title change because there isn't any actual vendor preference in statute anymore. So we've modified that to say selection of contractors and subcontractors.
Wendy, on fifty-two twenty-five?
Yes.
Is that a typo? We got twenty-eighteen or twenty-twenty-nine?
Yes, that is. I will, I have a secretary.
Don't hurt yourself, Brad. Any other questions on Neola?
So, on the emergency meetings, it looks like, what I, how I read this is that the superintendent can choose not to call an emergency meeting if the chair or a majority request it. It looks like it's, I mean, they've changed shall to may, and it couched it in terms of request.
So what that policy is doing is, it used to only address special meetings, and now it's addressing the difference between a special meeting and an emergency meeting, which is down below. Special meetings, they did change it from shade of ma- made of shall, but they also set, you know, expanded who can, who can call or ask for a call.
Oh, Mike, what I think, so Townsend's question is, what if the board chair requests the superintendent to call the meeting, but the superintendent refuses to do that?
Right, that's, I mean, I read that as giving the superintendent the authority to reject that, both from the chair and from the board as a whole.
It does, it does appear to be that way. That's a good question.
Not to suggest that it might would, I just, it's, that's a, made of shall's a pretty, pretty big change.
Well, can I, if you go down farther, under emergency meetings, A, I think it clears it up. Says the superintendent, comma, the board chair, comma, or, not and, or a majority of the board may call an emergency meeting when there's a committee danger, blah, 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 blah.
Yeah, and I think.
Clumsy, then, I mean, it's kind of.
I know, but.
But I think the point of that is that the superintendent sets the agenda, so it should flow through the superintendent, I think is the, is the point.
Is there a way to clarify that in the may shall, so that it's, so that it's like?
Wendy, is this a line, is this in line with Neola?
Yes, these are Neolas recommended, the language. And the, to, the way that I interpreted it was the superintendent either calls it at the request of the board chair or at the request of a majority of the board. And it probably looks awkward there with the strike throughs and additions.
I read it differently. I read it as if you said shall, if you, if there's an emergency and it says shall, that means you must call a meeting. It's not talking about whether the board wants a meeting or the, do you understand? If you put shall in there, then are people going to say, you were required to call a meeting about this, because it said you shall call and.
Right.
Somebody could consider it an emergency when indeed, you know.
May not be.
A storm, you have emergencies, things are taken care of. So to me, the may is releasing us from ever, the public saying, we should have called a meeting, may. And, you know, if the board wants a meeting, probably the superintendent is going to, you know, if there's good cause, have a meeting. But I just read it differently. I didn't read it as the superintendent refusing to call a meeting the board wants. It's, well, if you say if there's emergency, you shall call a meeting, well, that's.
But this section is the special meeting. Farther down is the emergency. They're two different things.
Yes.
Totally. So I agree with you, but I think that part A and the emergency covers it, and the special, you know, are meetings to discuss, you know, bargaining and whatever. We call special meetings all the time. And I see it as may, meaning you're not.
You don't.
Required to have to do it every time it's special. Right, exactly. Give some flexibility, I guess. That's how I read it. Thank you. Mr. Harris?
The way I'm interpreting A is that it's granting authority to do the calling of the meeting. Not mandating, but it's saying that authority is granted hereby to call special meetings when it's requested by either A or B.
They, this, there are some slight and subtle differences between this and what the statute says. Statute says, it deals first with the requirement for a regular meeting. The district school board shall hold not less than one regular meeting each month for the transaction business. That's the one you have to have. Shall convene in special sessions when called by the district school superintendent or by the district school superintendent on request of the chair or on request of the majority of the members of the district school board. So that, that is the way the statute reads. Shall convene in special sessions whenever they're called by either the superintendent, by the superintendent on request of the chair, on the request, or on the request of the majority of the members of the school board. That does not, that does not sound optional.
Do you want to change it?
Special meetings. That's one where it seems to me the cleanest thing might be to do a lift. Just to, just to clarify that, then Mr. Townsend's point is well taken. When you, when you change shall to may, you make it appear that it is optional and the, I think what the statute is trying to convey is that you are not required to have additional meetings. You may have additional meetings.
Right.
But they shall be, they shall be called when.
And then we need to add superintendent as a third option, correct?
Yeah, so, you know, why don't we just do a lift from the, from the statute and clean that.
So it's the same as the emergency then? It'll mimic that.
The, let's see here.
Right, because that's what it says down there.
I think may should be left there.
Well, I think if we say that we may call a special meeting, but if, if the individual involved called meeting, then it shall be done.
Right. Yeah. What I'm, what I'm, what I'm interested here is, does the superintendent, as a physician, have the right to reject a special meeting called by a majority of the board? That's, that's how, as I read that now, I think the position does. And, or I think a reasonable reading of that could be, and I think that's probably not a good idea.
And it seems to be, as it currently reads, a little inconsistent with.
Right.
The law. So maybe if we just said, we may convene a special meeting, but if those individuals involved want college, that shall be done. Does that, does that make sense? Would you agree, Mr. Townsend?
Yes, I think we can, we can do a lift from the statute and clean that.
Do you, I mean, do you, do you agree that the superintendent does not have the authority to reject a special meeting if?
Right, the, yeah, the superintendent has the authority to do it herself, but she also is required to do it at the, at the request of the chair or a majority of the board.
That was, that was.
Yes, no, I believe you're, I believe you're correct. So we'll, Mrs. Dodge and I will get together and make an adjustment there. Sometimes we do things like this in an effort to, to make the policies appear to be user-friendly. People don't like reading things that are dictatorial and thou shalt and thou shalt not. It's, it's nice when you can, when you can do it in a, in your prose and make it friendly and approachable, but this is one where we, clearly there's, there's an ambiguity there. We will remedy that.
Any more questions on Neola policies? So Wendy was cleaning out special meeting policy with Wes. Now we move to staff recommendations. Any questions? Mr. Townsend?
Just the, what the, is there a practical implication for teachers there? Like, the district must have a plan to show annual progress toward meeting these leaders versus all teachers employed by the district shall be quote eligible for full state of certification unquote. Does, does that meaningfully change anything? Do, I, I have no idea, I'm just, it seems like it might.
Well, it said the requirements of ESSA, so we're complying with the new ESSA, and ESSA replaces Nibbleby, the No Child Left Behind Act.
Right.
And so this policy is just complying with that. I guess practically, when we are speaking, the majority, if not all of our teachers already are certified in some way. So I don't know that it would necessarily change it per se.
Okay, I mean, I, I understand that it's, I'm not really questioning the policy as a, as a compliance, I'm just questioning what meeting's going to be. Are, are we going to end up losing the equal because of this definition here? I mean, I guess it's my, you know.
No, I don't see practically.
You don't pursue there being any practical.
No. It's literally what we're going with for us, yes.
Mr. Harris?
I'm reading it a little differently, I think.
Okay.
Full certification means no temporary certificate.
Well, full certification, no, does not mean necessarily no temporary certificate. Because that is certification.
I think that's going to mislead the public, because I think the public's going to read this as a fully certified teacher means they have met all complete certification requirements, not temporarily.
Well.
And that'll really tie our hands.
It would, if that's the way you read it. However, I don't necessarily read it that way. We can include other language to make sure that we say full and, or temporary and permanent certification.
I think that would clarify, because this right here, first thing I jump to, well, this is going to eliminate every temporary certified teacher we have, and you're telling us that half of our people no longer come into the profession being educators.
Correct. So that means that they are, they are on a temporary certificate. So we are more than welcome, or we are, I am more than welcome to change that language to make it more inclusive, so that everyone is clear.
Well, yeah, I think the, like, defining what eligible means, like, I'm, I'm not sure what eligible means, and that context, so maybe, in this case, eligible means expert, blah, 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 blah. That, that might, or clear, clear it up. I, I mean, I just don't know what that means. So it, I have sort of the same, I can't imagine that's the intent, but, but I do share what Harris is kind of requiring from that, so.
Any other questions on Neola staff recommendations?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
That's one thing about policy in general, like, it's a, I can, this is my own part, in the sense that we're doing policies. The, the communication with the board policy, the update on that that went out a few weeks ago, I think misstated what the policy actually says. I think it would be helpful, you know, there is no, as I read it, no, there is no policy that says all staff communication with a board, board has to go through superintendent. And I think the update that went out characterized it that way. I would like to see that corrected or addressed in some way. I don't think, I don't think it's good for us to have the board policies misstated, so, I mean, if we can, yeah, I don't think anybody intended to do anything harmful there, but it'd be helpful to clarify that. Does the, the board agree on that?
Yes. Would it be okay if we talked about that during the latter part?
Yeah, yes, yeah, so.
Thank you, Wendy. Thank you, Mr. Townsend. The next element we have before you today is Cronos. And I believe Jenna, is Jenna? Okay, there's Jenna.
Thank you.
Any other presentation they want to go through?
Good morning.
Good morning.
So I'm excited to bring this proposal for the district to use, or, well, a portion of the district, to use Cronos, which is a time and leave management system. And I'll give a brief history, and then it's going to take, for a few minutes, and then we have a brief PowerPoint that I think is in your packet, but we'll go through. First of all, Keith Martin and Rob Tibbs are here from Cronos, if they'll just give away, if we have any questions after, and they can answer. So, I said brief, but fifteen years ago, I was introduced to Cronos in former life when I was in Duval, and we were very excited about that, but then we had the, the turn in the economy. But at that time, we were using a lot of paper, and it was a very labor-intensive system. And so we looked at that, and it was kind of expensive at the time. And a couple of years ago, they called me here, and I had them come out and meet with our staff, and then they met individually with the staff. And all those folks that, and I'm bringing this, but this is really a benefit to the district and the different departments, and mainly the schools. But they met with everybody, and then they met individually. And they came to me and told me, you know, we had staff that were very excited about it, which I knew would be, because it's a huge help in terms of time and leave management. So, again, there is a cost to it. And so I talked with them about maybe doing a pilot. And so we, we chose food service for a couple of reasons. One, it's a good, good-sized group. They're out at every school. But the best part is that they are federally funded, it's not coming from the general fund. So I met with Jenna and Rob to see what their fund balance is, and Mr. Harris should be, I know their fund balance is high enough, probably close to double digits, so that they can handle this and it wouldn't be a burden moving forward. So I just wanted to give you that brief history on that, and then we're going to go through, again, just a few slides. I will say the ultimate goal is to go with this throughout the district, and we will probably, I wanted to see how the pilot worked and how it worked in food, in the food service program, and then during budget time next year, bring to you a proposal if, if this goes through and it, it all works out like we think it will. Then we will, we will try to have that implemented throughout the, throughout the district. So, the, the, we were presented with a slide or a PowerPoint from Cronos for the whole district, but then we kind of changed gears and said, let's do a small group, and we can fund it through food service. And so we kind of shortened that to the slides that you'll see today. So we're going to focus on savings, efficiency, compliance, and safety and security. On the savings part, I want to, I want to say, I'm very confident there will be savings from using this through, and so we'll touch on some of that, but I want to emphasize the savings through productivity. And I mentioned the schools will be a huge benefit. The payroll folks at the schools spend a lot of time and energy on going through the payroll part of their job, and this is going to alleviate a major part. And we heard that, and Cronos sent us, we did a survey of our staff, and that was a big piece of what we heard from the schools. Jenna's going to talk a little bit about, in her area, in terms of management, and Mr. Davis also might, like.
Yeah, so I'll touch on efficiency, but while we're on the productivity slide, unfortunately, we have, you know, about eleven hundred school nutrition employees, and unfortunately, a fair amount of our time is spent dealing with attendance issues, looking into attendance issues, leave requests, and things of that nature. With our current system being paper-based, it is an inefficient use of time. A lot of time is often just spent going back and forth with the school, with time entered for this day at the payroll secretary's level, things like that. Wasted time, really, when you just want to get to the matter at hand. So for inefficiency, if you look just at the school secretaries, they're spending a lot of time entering time for our employees, so we're centrally managed. You know, we manage the school nutrition employees, but unfortunately, because we're paper-based, the school principals and the school payroll secretaries are the ones who end up with much of that responsibility and entering time and looking into those matters. And also, our school nutrition managers spend a fair amount of time trying to stay on top of their employees and make sure that they're treated equitably, which is very important for me. So it's not about, you know, catching employees that don't have enough time to be off and things of that nature, but that they're all treated fairly. And when you have a hundred and five locations, and the managers are trying to keep on top of it, some of them are very diligent, and they let you know of issues right away, others wait too long to tell you, and then employees are not being treated fairly when we do have to look into those issues. So, again, lots of productivity loss and efficiencies that could be greatly improved if we just had an easy-to-use, you know, automated system. Yes.
And as well as the support services division, which also encompasses transportation operations, which is very unique, because we're one of the groups that enter positive time for all of our bus drivers and bus attendants. So each week, we have our drivers fill out timesheets, our attendants fill out timesheets. Those are sent to the courier, they're sorted out by the area, and then those are calculated by hand, and then that information is then put into SAP, which is an extremely time-consuming process. And if there was a possibility that Cronos could, could, if this, if this shows that, you know, it's efficient, somehow us work together and develop a system where that time is being tracked through, our GPS is on every school bus, and then brought into a Excel spreadsheet or some type of document that can speak directly to SAP, we would cut out all of that labor.
This would also, before I turn it back over to Mike, give us a lot more visibility, because of course, we're not at those hundred and five locations. If a manager's absent, the principal may know, because they're on campus, although not all the time, because our managers get there at 5:00 AM, 6:00 AM, you know, and the principal may or may not get down there. They don't always know when they had an emergency or can't be on, on duty, and if the manager fails to email us, we're unaware that that person is not there. This would give us visibility into that, which would be very, very helpful. They also have to email us, you know, for overtime approval, and things that this system would make much more efficient for them, and letting them just manage their day-to-day, because the days when they need to ask for overtime for their staff are the crazy days, because something has happened that's led to them needing their staff to stay longer, and yet they're having to stop and send an email, and if it's not approved, then that's a payroll audit binding, and, you know, little things like that that seem insignificant but really do cause some headaches. So I'll turn it back over to Mike for compliance.
So in compliance, and the one area I want to touch on is an area that is, a topic that is growing, and it's our FMLA. And we've had a number of FMLA, or an increase in folks using that, and there's some compliance issues. As a matter of fact, I believe that Mr. Bridges and I have a few that are heading towards a legal situation. And so this will help immensely in the fact that, wait, there's a lot of paperwork, it's a lot of questions of who does what, who's on what, taking what time, and so FMLA has become a huge burden, and this will be very helpful in terms of meeting the compliance and any legal issues that may come of that. We should be able to catch early and be able to do it efficiently. Yes, sir.
FMLA is unpaid leave, correct?
No.
Yeah, family and men are leaving you. It's just a, an option of leave if you have, but you can.
So we pay employees sometimes? But not all?
If they have the leave.
If they have leave. What do you mean, if they have leave? Vacation and sick leave?
Sick leave, yeah.
What's the difference between that and just taking sick leave?
It's a job protection. FMLA is a federal statute that provides a job protection.
Right.
Which means that you can take essentially up to twelve weeks of leave off and still come back to your job. If you were just to take sick leave off, you can take the, let's say, maximum, well, whatever amount of sick leave you have, if it's four days or five days, and then from there, you're, you're not entitled to that job, that same job when you return.
What would be the advantage for an employee who is dismissed to then request FMLA?
You keep insurance as well, and then you keep, that's dismissed? I'm not sure I understand your question.
Well, how would it benefit an employee who's been dismissed to then turn around and file for FMLA?
Oh, they're not filing for FMLA generally, they're filing a lawsuit saying that we did not afford them their FMLA rights for whatever reason. We did not, we may have dismissed them unfairly while they were on FMLA, or we may have disciplined them for any reason while on FMLA, or just by the very nature of taking FMLA, they may have suffered some sort of retaliatory treatment, and as a result, now they're filing an FMLA lawsuit with Wes. And as a result, now they're filing an FMLA lawsuit with West.
Speaking of after they are released, then filing for FMLA benefits.
I think I could add a little bit to, and that's what we're finding. I think sometimes this bucket is growing. Sometimes people find out that they may have or could have been covered under this after the fact that they had a family member, excuse me, that was ill. And so they say, well, I shouldn't have gotten fired because I could have, and so they come back after the fact. Or, you know, try to do that. And I think that might be what you're talking about. We've had a couple of situations, but this is just becoming very broad. So this system will help in terms of, for example, and Ms. Myers isn't here, but she loved this when she saw it, because we are supposed to notify employees on the third day that they are out. So we don't know on the third day when someone is out because it's all paper and it's after the fact. But this, because you're punching every day, if you don't come into work for three days, a report will go to risk management that says you are out. And then they send the paperwork that you may qualify for FMLA. So it's real time and that's the advantage of the system. So that's just one piece, but that's a compliance I wanted to talk about. In school safety, I'll turn back over to Rod.
Currently, we have a system called Raptor, and that's a visitor system. And so I asked Captain Seymour earlier, you know, how would we know who's on campus if we had, God forbid, an active assailant come on site? And the employees that are assigned to the location may have called in sick, may have scheduled vacation, may be out. And with Cronos, everyone would either log in through a scanning machine or through login on their computer.
Your own phone.
So it would actually capture all employees that are there on that specific day. So from a remote location, like a command center, Captain Seymour, SafeStor, could actually go in to the login with those permissions and pull out all the employees that are currently active at the campus. So they wouldn't, and then if we had to evacuate the campus, they wouldn't be looking for John Doe because John Doe, we knew, didn't clock in that day and had scheduled leave to call in that one. So that would improve the, would give us an enhanced safety feature that we currently do not have.
Lastly, you have the references from Cronos. One of the first things school districts or, you know, we like to ask is, are you in large districts? Are you in Florida? And the last and probably one of the most important is, do you have, or what ERP system and do you use SAP? And so you have a map here of Florida and the different entities with state, local, government, and K-12. And so we have Broward in orange. You have some other large districts, but Broward and orange use SAP and they integrate very well with that. So that's a piece that is very important. Lynn Adams, our Director of Purchasing, spent quite a, quite a long time trying to find a contract that we can use that's out there. And she has, to her satisfaction, I believe, ran it by Mr. Bridges, that there's a contract out there that we can use. It's not the same as Broward or, because, or Orange, because theirs is coming up for renewal soon, so we don't want to jump on a contract that's going to end soon. I want to point out one last piece. It's relevant, but it's a little bit out there. So we're getting close to our audit being finished. Jason and I and Dave Dembo met with the auditors and they have a list of comments, issues that they see and that may become audit findings, comments for the end of the audit. They can't put those in writing until the AG sees them and approves them, but they gave us a heads up. One of them, and this one, we push back on it and we will continue to, which is that, for example, I don't approve Jason every day that he comes into work. We approve when he takes leave. Yesterday, I was on leave. Superintendent got a form, she signed and approved that I was on leave. Today, she's not doing anything to approve that I'm here and working. And we think that's kind of ridiculous. However, this system will eliminate that finding because it'll come back every year when it, that is it. Because I'm not going to go out and recommend to you that we're going to make this major change of approving time, time on duty versus time when you're not. Because we're, by exception.
So we're getting an audit?
I don't know how it.
We're not sure yet?
Yeah, we're not sure. Because we push back, but in my response.
We think though, it's for not approving the time that exempt employees are here.
We actually got a finding, the last.
I wanted to bring it up because this system would, this would cover, we kind of think it's.
I'm sure we will, yeah.
We will, yeah. Because it was last.
We got it last time.
Anyway, I wanted to bring that up, just because it is relevant to this situation. So you have on the agenda item, the cost, and the main part is the hardware, and that's not a recurring cost. So the recurring cost is $78,000. We saw some of the savings. Some of them were soft, and when I say soft, meaning efficiencies, and some were dollars. And I think we're very conservative on that. The dollar amounts that I talked about will really increase is when, when and if we go district-wide. And there's, you know, just the leave alone, capturing the right leave that people are taking. And again, it's not to say that people are, as Jenna said, cheating, it's just when you're an entity this large and trying to capture everyone taking leave and paperwork and time goes by and secretaries are trying to get staff to fill the paperwork out and it gets lost or whatever, it will, just in the long-term liability leave, it will, you will definitely say.
Question, Mr. Wilson?
Well, first of all, it occurs to me that as we see the federal say government mandating additional services and mandating additional benefits, without funding those things, it becomes increasing and more important to increase productivity through technology. And so I understand and I'm all for this, but I do, so this is just a question. It's not, if you don't have an answer, it's okay, I'm not, I'm going to press the issue. But you mentioned soft, you put the savings into dollars and some of those are soft savings and some of them are hard savings. Do we have a sense of what hard savings are?
On this piece, we're only showing, and again, we're very conservative, but the one slide we had, and again, on slide, which direct save?
The hard savings.
Yeah, the direct saving. I think it's.
Oh, it's earlier on.
Yeah, it's earlier. Yeah, the direct savings. And again, what Cronos does is, so they're very large. And so, and they've been around for quite some time. And so they have a model of what, based on a payroll of a company, based on the number of employees, they can extrapolate out what a savings can be. So again, this is kind of in general and it's very conservative. I think there'll be a lot more on the leave inflation and the payroll accuracy. The one thing that really got me when I started here, and I've been dealing with it for five years, is what we have is overpaying. Again, because we have, or kind of, we pay by exception. So at the end of the month, we cut off on October 20th, but I'm going to get paid for those days in between. So we're cut off, I get a check. If I don't show up those days, I'm getting paid. If I quit and don't show, come back on November 1st, I will get a check put into my account. And then if I took all my sick leave and all my vacation, I would have no way to pay back the district. So I'm out the door with that. This is not going to eliminate it altogether, but it will help immensely. And so I, you know, that's why I've been trying, struggling with that since I got here. And this is, this is one way to really help in that savings.
Ms. Fields, so.
Well, I think this is a no-brainer. I think that with the number of employees that we have, this is going to be good. I think going back to the job that Carol and her staff do, that should help with your payroll audits because a lot of the findings that we have, we believe in, in my opinion, just from reading, we get a lot of those. The question that I have is, long-term, do you have any ideas of what it would cost to do the entire school district? And if you do have an estimate, nothing, fine, would those dollars come from general funds or where would they come from?
Well, we do, we got an estimate for, for the district. The, actually, the big pain, the big cost is the hardware. And we may, there's three ways, and I think Rob touched on, you could punch in, or you can use your phone app when you get into the location of work, or you can use your computer. Well, everybody already has a phone and a computer that, of the employees, so they can do that. That wouldn't be an extra cost. Jenna's is different, so she needs to have the physical, the timekeeping. And so we're going to purchase those. We might not need those for the rest of the district, but then there's the cost that you see for the software, the licensing, and I can get you all that. What I'd like to do is get maybe three to six months in and come back to the report on how it's working. And then that'll be about the time we're going to be talking about budget and we'll go from there and see if we'd like to move forward.
So basically, it's going to vary depending on the tools that the staff will use.
Yeah. If we need to buy, there might be a recommendation to buy some more per location, the scanner system. Because as Rob and I were just talking, it might be good to have one in the central office of a school, so that would totally change the cost. But if we, if we just go with that staff would use the device that they've already got, then it'll be a lot cheaper.
So.
Oh, I was, the $420,000 or is just for food service?
Yes.
And they can afford it?
Yes.
But the savings, the savings, the annual cost, after you pay the one-time big cost, the annual cost look like that you recoup that in savings because the
Yeah.
The reoccurring costs aren't going to be an issue. It's going to be the initial, is that how it looks? In fact, there'll be more savings, it looks like, than what the cost are.
Yeah, I'm very confident that these numbers are conservative.
And I do know the headaches and there might even be less, we might at some point need less people doing very labor-intensive work.
It could, it could possibly, yeah.
But it's just.
I know how busy the schools are too.
Focusing another thing.
Yeah, they are. You all have been out to schools and you see what happens in front offices.
Yes.
Ms. Cunningham?
Okay, so just doing some preliminary numbers, looking at your numbers and then the PowerPoint that you did this morning. Basically, the savings, if you add up the four different categories, we're at about $173,000 per year, adding up all four. Year one is $420,000, right? And then year two plus is 78. So if you divide 173 into 420,000, it's basically a return on our investment in two and a half years for this part of the program or this department.
Just a small one.
Right, which is small. But, I mean, so I'm echoing what Ms. Fields has said. I totally agree that I think this is a no-brainer. I think we need to move forward. I'm not looking at it as an opportunity to reduce employees. I'm looking at it as an opportunity for the employees that we currently have to be less insane at the schools and be able to redirect their efforts towards helping children instead of doing paperwork, quite frankly. So that's kind of how I see it. But financially, I believe it's a great investment if, if this, you know, pans out. And you said you've talked to other school districts, so, I mean, are they telling you that they've received some similar savings? I mean, I know this is an estimate.
Much more efficient.
Palm Beach, where Sasha came from, used it. When I brought this to Cabinet last week, she's like, oh, God, we got to do this.
Really?
Much more efficient.
Much more efficient, okay.
And this slide towards the beginning was based on an actual study conducted from a consulting firm?
Yeah.
Okay.
You know, regarding the economic impact of the time.
So anyways, I would support it, look forward to getting it. So are you going to pilot this then for this coming up school year?
Or we'll bring it to the meeting next two weeks.
Okay.
And then we'll get with Cronos and start an implementation immediately and we'll kind of figure out how we're going to. So it'll be this year and then we'll be able to.
Wonderful, thank you.
Mr. Townsend?
I just have some questions about the process. Has this gone through an RFP?
No, that's what I was saying. We are, look, we found a current contract that Cronos has and I don't know.
That's what I mean, so, I guess my follow-up question to that is, this is essentially providing an enormous contract to, this contract may not be enormous, but obviously the implications of this are enormous if it ends up doing for the entire district. Are there no other payroll processing companies? I mean, how do we know how Cronos stacks up with other vendors? So I guess that's point one. But I'll maybe just start there. Why, why didn't this go through an RFP? Why shouldn't it go through an RFP?
It obviously could go through. There are other companies out there. I don't think they're at the, have the experience, size, and volume of what they've done in the past. And so we could absolutely do an RFP. This was just a recommendation because of their, and the fact that they're in districts and they have some SAP. Those were those, and that's why I mentioned that, the main thing. So it was just, they're one of, they're one of the biggest players in this, in this market. But yes, there are others. I get some solicitations from other companies that, but they just don't, I don't think they have the, all the different, we are only taking advantage of a small part of what Cronos does. They have other things that are available. And so we, if you go with another company, you're only going to get that piece. And so it gives you the advantage to have the ability to add on to more efficient processes.
What's the?
I want to add one thing. I think also you were looking to piggyback on those other districts that's already implementing using Cronos, am I correct?
Yeah, no, the contract Lynn found was a piggyback.
That's what, right.
But she couldn't use those only because they end, I believe, in
How long?
February of next year. And so Lynn was like, you don't want to go onto a contract that's nine months, you're going to have to go and try to find another one.
All right, so, so, I'm going to probably ask this about any kind of contract that we have of this implication. You know, you mentioned having, sort of getting, becoming accustomed or acquainted with them back when you were in Jacksonville. How did Cronos come to be the person, what's the relationship that's led to this?
To?
To bring in this here. Like, obviously, I suspect they did some kind of sales thing, they came in and.
And so when I, when I was introduced to them, I want to say it was '03, '04, '05, they came in with the CFO from Chicago Public Schools who had implemented. And, are you still with Chicago?
Yeah.
And so they came in and did this great presentation and it was everything that we were struggling with. And so we didn't end up moving forward. As I said, a couple of years later, we hit, the economy crashed and it was hard to bring in an expense, even though it was going to save you money when you kind of had that money. And periodically, over the last 10 years, they have contacts, their vendor that is looking to move their product and so, we brought them in a couple of years ago. And it's been a two-year, it's been two years that they've, we've met every three or four months, the staff, on what their needs were and whether it was going to meet everybody's needs. And everybody is extremely satisfied with, not satisfied, but looking forward to and think they could help. to and think they could help immensely in terms of making their job easier. So I believe you're, Keith, you want to comment? Are you on the state? There's some state bids too. We tried to get on the state bid and there was something wrong with Florida.
What's, what's, what's the timeline for implementation? What's, what's, what's your, if, if we were to approve it, what's go, go, go on?
It's pretty quick. Rob, you want to talk about that?
About ninety to a hundred and twenty days, but which is one very good, more in the ninety range.
And who, where's the, is the one-time setup fee? Is that essentially the implementation fee? Is that, who, who's doing the, the implementation? Are they doing it or are we doing it?
It's a joint effort.
We have, we have to be a big part of it because then you move forward, you have to
People have to maintain.
Yeah, yeah, to, to learn and to, to know it, so.
With the buyer, they could probably train our managers at each location to be able to implement it with their staff. I think that's what we discussed.
I can tell you, I, I mean, I appreciate the need for a system like this. Kronos may well be the best, best vendor, but this is really a multi, 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 multi-million dollar contract. I mean, we're, we're, if this goes well, they're getting everything. I, I, you know, I'd really like to see this run through an, an RFP. I think it's I don't, I don't, I understand the, the desire to do it easily, but, you know, how, how much time are we, we looking at? How much disruption are we, we, we looking at to do an RFP? I mean, I think if, if Kronos is the best, then they'll be able to, to show that.
You know, I don't know.
At least three months.
It's at least three months.
Time you send it out, you get them back in.
Three to six months.
Three to six, right, yeah.
Is, is, is there a way to expedite it?
No.
No, there's no way to expedite it.
Not for RFPs.
Because you have to give them time.
The, the process out there, it's there as a matter of public policy to make sure that everybody has the opportunity to do their public business. There is no expedited process for, for an RFP. The process is the process. And if you draw a protest, the process is, is not under our control and, and it can, that can extend the period in, into years because that, those are, those are matters of litigation. When it is possible to quote, piggyback on another district, what we're doing is we're taking advantage of a contract that's already been competed. There's no infringement of competition. So as a matter of public policy, you are, you are absolutely able to do that. There, there is no downside to that if, if there is a contract you can do it with. But as Mike pointed out, we've run into problems lately. There are some districts out there who, who are represented by different council that have entered into piggyback contracts that are multi-year contracts on a contract that's actually ending six months from now. I think you can't do that. I think an auditor will, will jump all over that with both feet. If you're adopting a contract, what you're adopting can't be any greater than the contract that you're, that you're adopting. But if there is a, a contract out there that we can ride, that is a, that is a quick and easy and completely legitimate way of doing it. Our problem is if there's not one, you know, then, then we're, we're back to square one and we either have to do an RFP or look for another exception. But we do RFPs for, for public policy reason. They do take a long time. And for those, for those who are not familiar with the process, they, they are, they add cost to the process and they frequently don't result in lower costs to the district. They are designed to protect vendors, not, not, not government clients.
Mr. Harrison, Ms. Cunningham.
Just a clarification slash education opportunity. It is my understanding that the piggyback process, which has been in existence for decades for governmental entities in the state of Florida, is a process that comes from a previous RFP having been done, a contract awarded because of that RFP having been done, and then other governmental entities in the state of Florida being able to enter into a contract with that company for the same services based on that contract that came from that previous RFP.
Yes.
And that is a way to short-circuit having to start over and do a new RFP. And that's what you're proposing, correct?
Yes.
Ms. Cunningham.
Okay, so question. Hearing all the comments, the contract that we would like to piggyback on, you're saying, Mr. Bridges, this is not the time to do that because it's about in six months. Pardon?
They found one.
Yes.
I know, but it's about to end. So my question is
You said some districts already jumped on that.
There are districts that are doing that, and, and Mr. Prong was mentioning a situation where we had looked to piggyback on the contract, but it was about to end and we, so we did not do.
So we've chosen, what you've presented today is
Is longer term so that it's, it's more
Okay. Is, is it more cost-effective to, let's say if it's approved, to go forward now? Or does it make more sense to wait until this other group re-ups and piggyback with them in six months? Which would give time for this?
That's, yeah.
That's my question. I don't know. I'm asking.
I don't, yeah, I think the cost, I, I don't think the cost would change much. It's just that you don't want to get in, get on a, a one in nine months, you're back out doing it again or looking for another one. Because you don't know if the other entity is going to re-up. So you always look for the longest term you can find out there. And Lynn found one that was more suitable.
And what's that term?
I don't, I honestly don't know. She's here to answer that.
So, Ms. Sellers.
Is there a short, because I know what the RFP process looks like. And actually, sometimes it's even hard with the RFP because they promise you things that can't, that, because I've actually witnessed that. They promise you things and then they don't come through. So many times, it is better to look at your surrounding counties and find proven work other than letting some company come in and tell you they can do it when in fact they can't. But are, is there a shortened process to look at some other, so that Mr. Townsend feels that we, we are getting a really good deal, look at some other districts that are using something else and see the capacity? Because I know there's companies maybe that can't, that don't have the capacity that would, would maybe indicate that they could. Does that make sense to, to question some other counties and see what product they're using and find out what capacities they have so that it looks, so that we can get a fair view of what's out there and why we want to maybe build with Kronos?
Would you, would you get one estimate to build a house? I mean, this is, this is a pretty, you know, it's, it's a pretty, pretty significant deal.
Well, when you look, when you question other, that's why I said, question other districts. See what they're using, the cost. And then because the piggyback process is, is really to benefit districts, not vendors. Because the RFP process is, it's time-consuming on, on both ends. You don't want to waste vendors' time either. You don't want vendors applying that really can't do. But if we look, if we, if we bring towards what some other large districts like us are using other than Kronos, then we may see which one we want to piggyback on and Lynn just won't then. That may be a way of looking at what's out there without having to do the RFP process.
Do you want to speak first, Dave?
Yes.
Do you have the term of the contract that we're recommending?
This one's valid through February twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three.
Whose contract is that that we're piggybacking off of?
It's awarded under the city of Mesa, Arizona. They're a lead agency.
Ms. Reynolds, Ms. Cunningham.
Of the school districts that you listed, do you know how many of those are piggyback contracts versus how many did their own RFPs? Or is that information that we can find out?
On top of my head, I don't. I know that there is. I can get that if you'd like to, Mike.
Lynn, did you, you, you talked to the other districts?
I talked to a couple of different agencies. It's been a little while, so I don't remember without you.
I thought Palm Beach was a piggyback.
They are. I saw exactly how many of those are. I know there's at least two or three.
I just would be curious to see, is this, they're all from one RFP done 20 years ago? Or there have been 10 or 15 RFPs done in the past three or four years? And if that's the case, then.
Technology implementations change.
I think the contract that Lynn referred to was done in, that's, you know, as far as you have to leave.
It's like they awarded it in February.
The other, the other thing would be for that particular one that you just mentioned, if there was an RFP done and the other districts and possibly us would want to piggyback, could we get information about that RFP and share? For example, what were the three or four that they had to send out? What was the documentation received to get them to come to that decision that they wanted to award the contract with Kronos? That's essentially sharing that information with us to know, wait a minute, they did do their due diligence. Look at what was sent out. Look at what they got back. And the numbers may be a little different here and there, but at least it might give us a better feel. I, I don't know. Just a thought.
Fields. That was my comment. Is that why don't we look at the, the company, I mean, where we're going to piggyback from? And then see what vendors submitted an RFP. And then that can help determine whether or not we are current or if we need to go back and do something different.
Okay, that and take a look at the current districts up there and see how they procure it and
Yes, yes, that would really be
Mr. Townsend.
Just, just a couple, just a couple, couple things to include. I mean, I literally respond. My job is to help respond to technology RFPs. They are not designed to help vendors. I mean, that, that is shocking for, 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 for the vendor I work for would be shocked to learn, to learn, to learn, to learn that. I agree, they're, they're unpleasant processes sometimes. Two, for us specifically as an institution, unfortunately, we have a record in recent years of having relationships, having sole source provider, having significant deals that don't turn out great results and come with some, some baggage attached to them. I, I like this idea. I really do. I, I, you know, I'm all for it. I, I, I under, I, let's do it right. Let's do, let's do it right. That's, that's my, my only, the, the, I don't question the legal ability to do it off the piggyback contract. I, I, I just want to make sure we're doing good, good, good business. And that's, that's, that's my, that's, that's my thing.
So I, I guess the question is if, if we got the, the RFP from the current
From Mesa.
From Mesa, and then also visited these school districts, would that, would that suffice for you? Or you, is that okay? Or do you want a full RFP process? Is that what you're saying?
I mean, I, I, I think I prefer a, a proper process just, just because this is going to be a massive deal. I mean, it's, like, it's, it's, it's not practical that we're, that we're going to stop and rebid this for, for everybody once this goes through. I mean, the, the, the nose is getting under, 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 under the tent and then the whole camel's coming, coming in. And, you know, I, I'm sure they're a good, good vendor. I mean, I, I've heard of Kronos. I, I'm not, I, I just think, it's, it's more a question of public competence. It's, it's a question of, of showing people that we're going to do this the right way. I don't, that's
Okay.
I, I, that's, that, I, I think that's what my preference is if you guys overrule that. And, and I'm torn. I mean, I, I, part of me wants to do what you're saying, but I, sorry.
Well, so, you know, you made it clear. And that was my question. I just want to know what, what you felt about it. So let's do this. So in the RFP process is a lengthy process. So let's start with a plan and see how it looks. And if, if we decide as a board we want to do a full RFP process.
Yeah, that's, that's fair.
Are you good with that?
Yeah, I think that's the way to go. So you're going to get us that information and then get back so that we know all about that. Okay?
Great. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Great presentation.
Next, we have a couple of job descriptions with Portis and Mr. Perone.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Mine is much less technical, I promise. We are presenting two JVs, one for an accounting specialist, one and accounting specialist two. One is a revised, or actually both are revised JVs. And they fall under Mr. Perone's purview.
Any questions all about that?
Can we need to clarify, did he store it?
Yes.
Yes.
This clip on Bill's correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Quick question. Is there any, is there any, any reason why this was brought to us as opposed to, like, just procedurally? Why, why this wouldn't go on like the consent agenda? What's, what's the significance of this? I'm curious.
It's a change that the school board has to approve, any changes, significant changes to any JVs. That is your duty statutorily.
Okay, so, so, so this is considered a significant change?
Correct. Anything besides minor changes, words, small words. Duties are significant.
Any other questions on that one? Thank you. The next one you have before you is, Ms. Portis will be bringing out for teacher engagement coordinator.
Well, as you all know, we have a new department. It's called the Teacher Engagement Department. Jessica Solano is our teacher engagement leader. When she was onboarded, we did include this position in the staffing plan. However, I did not write a JV for it at that time. Upon speaking with Jessica or Ms. Solano, one of the questions I had for her is, let's see what the amount of work will be for that position. Since now she is in that position and we are very serious about engaging our teachers, we determined that it is quite a bit of work that we want to do and we don't want her to be overwhelmed. So since we did have a position, I did go ahead and write the job description for it. And this will support Ms. Solano in our efforts to engage teachers.
Funding.
I'm sorry?
Funding.
Funding is from Title II.
Any questions?
I guess there's a one question.
Ms. Fields.
Yes, ma'am. On the education experience, it says some previous experience conducted leading or facilitating groups of professional employee benefits. Can you give me an example of that, please?
Certainly. So essentially, a part of engagement is that, let's say, the new teacher, we had a new teacher welcome reception, so now we're doing new teacher seminars. So this person would be leading those seminars. So facilitating that group is something that we want them to do. Previously, it would be, let's say, new teacher or employee engagement, other employee engagement activities. That's what we wanted the, this person to be able to do.
So then be working in, in collaboration with community, the community office, with Rachel's office.
No.
They won't be doing any, any cross-communication with each other.
Besides designing flyers.
Yeah, or something.
Yes, so that will be
Kind of help push the press releases and all that stuff out?
No.
They're going to be doing that themselves.
So we work with Rachel's office to design flyers and brochures and manuals for us, but we conduct our own leadership trainings and everything.
I understand that, but what I'm talking about, if you do big events, are you going to be collaborating with the community department?
Oh, yes.
That's what I'm saying.
Yes, I'm sorry. We always collaborate with
Yeah, I'm just trying to understand the new process and how that's going to work.
Yes, ma'am.
And you say that you prefer someone with experience teaching And you say that you prefer someone with experience, teaching experience is preferred. Is that optional, when you say preferred? If someone from the community has some experience, but not necessarily in the classroom, would they be given an opportunity?
We will likely interview, I really would prefer a former teacher, if at all possible. It is teacher engagement, I think it's really hard to understand how to engage teachers if you've not walked in their shoes before.
Right, and then, and if someone that might have been a principal who's looking for employment back into the school system, that would be doable as well?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, just curious. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you. Next up, we have a Navigator Academy of Leadership, new contract with Dr. Aix and Ms. Bridges.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So I'm gonna take us on a little trip down memory lane. February twenty seventeen, we had an application that you approved for Navigator. And if you remember, that got stalled. They wanted, they originally were planning to open in Davenport. Then, quite unexpectedly, we got a letter saying, oh, we found property right across from Lakeland Highlands Middle School, which last time I checked the map, those two areas are a little bit far apart.
Not contiguous.
So, we stopped the contract negotiations because our application talked about Davenport. And when you look back in the notes, both Mr. Wilson and Ms. Sellers specifically asked, are you looking at Davenport where we have a need? And they said, yes, that's where we planned to open.
Unequivocally, yes.
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 Yes. That unequivocally is just a little.
You keep using that word, I do not think it means what you think it means.
So after, after considerable back and forth and that really stalled the contract process, we received notification that they had found property in Davenport. So at this point in time, we're ready to move forward with the contract because they have indicated that they will open in Davenport. So let me forestall, the first question you asked me, what is the address in Davenport, right? They, it is in Davenport, it's unincorporated, we don't even have a physical address at this point in time. But when you look at the range township area, it is listed as Davenport in Poe County. So I will get you more specific information on that, but just a quick refresher, and I don't wanna take up too much time. Remember, this is a school that is a K eight that wants to open as a K six with six hundred and sixty students, five-year contract, which is a pretty standard contract. There'll be up to a thousand students at K eight at that point in time. So if you look at the rest of the contract, it's pretty standard. You know, we don't have a lot of flexibility when it comes to negotiating what the state calls a contract. And we can have a conversation on what is an actual contract some other time. But, so we're looking at a contract from July one, twenty nineteen to July thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. Five years, they're gonna adopt our student progression plan, they're gonna be an FRS site. They're going, they're looking at eleven monthly payments, sometimes we do twelve, sometimes we'll do eleven, so they wish to do eleven here. So those are, other than that, it's just the standard contract. I think the big issue was getting the location.
Once they have the location, they, and we do the contract, they can't come back a year later and say, we're changing the location again and that contract be valid, right?
That's an excellent question, we're gonna actually put that in the contract, so the school is approved based on that location.
So they can't switch it down the road?
They, they could come and make a request.
Yeah, it would have to be a contract modification.
Okay, and we could refuse the contract modification.
Yes, and remember, there is an appeal process for that, but I think we'd be on pretty solid ground.
Is, where, is that in the contract that we're looking at, that says it has to be in Davenport?
If you go, hold on, I'm pulling up the contract, there's a whole section on facilities. And in the facilities section, it specifically talks about the location, it's actually put into the contract.
There's legal descriptions that will be put in there from the plat.
Cause there's nothing in here that specifically says Davenport?
Oh, it's highlighted, page twenty.
I know, but it, it just says, any proposed change in location? Is there somewhere that says that the original location will be in Davenport?
That was what was in their original application, their application becomes an amendment to the contract and actually is part of the contract. However, one of the things we can do now that we have a physical location is go back in between now and the time it comes to the boarding, go ahead and put that physical. And I think the reason it didn't go in is cause it doesn't, it literally doesn't have an address yet. But we'll, we'll look and see if that's a possibility, but if not, it will be in the attachment.
Thank you.
How far is their location from Reef View Global?
I can't answer that, but I will get that information and send it out to everyone.
Is it north or south of Interstate?
She doesn't know.
But they gave you a.
They gave us a, so, I will get, I will get with Melissa, Melissa is out sick today. She has done the, the yeoman's work on this. So I, rather than give you incorrect information, I'd rather do some research and come back and give you the most accurate.
So it's not a building, they're gonna have to construct.
No, it is not a building, it is a piece of land. And they will have to.
Is their intent to open next school year?
They are planning to open twenty nineteen, I would not be surprised if we get a request to defer. But at this point in time, to get past the, the phase, we have to move forward with the contract. Any other question? All right.
Thank you.
And I will send you an email. Yeah, we'll get the physical description, if we can't get the, the physical address, we'll give you the description and answer the question about.
Next, we have before you, Dr. Aix will, school improvement plans are coming up, which is an annual item that we have on, Dr. Aix?
Yes, ma'am, so we're kind of bored. We provided for the school board members the school improvement plans that are in your district. This is an annual approval. Please keep in mind that those school improvement plans are a living, breathing document that ever changes as we go through the year. As we do reflective visits or instructional reviews, then the regional and principals will make changes and updates to that. But according to state statutes and state board rules, we bring them for approval to the school board in October. Then in November, we actually submit them to the Florida Department of Education. Questions or concern?
Thank you, thanks, a lot of work, thank you. And the next item?
I, I did have, I noticed in District Six, excuse me, I should be better prepared, that one or more of the schools didn't have grades yet? On the school improvement plan for District Six?
Which school?
But what it did still say incomplete, but I'm assuming it was done before the grade came out.
Thank you.
I'll take, I'll find it and get back, you can do that.
Yeah, just email me the, the schools that they're not specifically stated on. They should have been updated by now, but again, we pulled these quite some towns up, tried to get them organized, so they might not have updated them. Just let me know, I'll get that date for you.
The next item we have before you will be the name change for Given Street Elementary, Ms. Towns.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Just bringing before you, I believe you received attachments with a community notice, the minutes and the sign and sheet from the meeting, but per board policy, we did formally hold an education facilities naming committee meeting to rename the school previously Given Street Elementary. It was a pretty straightforward meeting on September seventeenth, only one name was proposed, and that was Given Street Elementary Preschool Center. So we held that meeting, I'm sorry, Given Street Preschool Center. Still in the habit of saying Given Street Elementary. But we held that meeting and the community members were present and we're just bringing forward that recommendation to you.
Ms. Harris?
What involvement did the pre-K department have in this process?
Mr. Gregory Kent, who is our pre-K director, he was very involved in the process.
Matty Freech, the pre-K director?
I mean, for, he's at the site, Given Street Preschool, he is the site director.
Runs all of our pre-K programs involved in the process?
They were all invited to attend, but Ms. Freech did not attend the meeting.
Any questions? Ms. Towns?
Um, this, this is, I guess, somewhat related. There's this, the structure of the place, I heard some concerns about access, like, now that we sort of divided, there's like administrative DSE facilities and there's the preschool. And I think with all the school security stuff, there, there was some, some access issues, like people having to go a long way to get to it. Is there, is there any, have we addressed that at all, or any plan to address that, to like, change fencing a little bit? I don't know what precisely would be needed, but is that familiar?
Somewhat, the guardian is there on campus. The drop-off zone in the front of the school for arrival, the students can be dropped off and there's a gate that goes straight to their building. It's not too terribly far to walk. And then we did transition from the front gate that used to be open for the K five school with walkers. We have a different entrance that probably knocks off about fifty feet to walk for the younger students. And we now have that gate open at arrival and dismissal only. So it's, the perimeter is all secure during the day and that gate access allows them to be a little bit closer to their building. But the building, the preschool building is immediately behind the main office, so they're all really right there, close together. It's actually more of the learning support team that's spread out on the campus.
Right, I think that, that's actually what I was talking about, like, 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 it's, it's more the adults who work there access. I just was curious if there was any, any issue involved in trying to, to enhance access. Not the most urgent thing in the world, but I had heard some, some concerns about. That, again, I haven't actually been there to, to, to see the full, full layout myself, but that might be worth checking into. If, if, if there's a gate that we, that we could add, you know, like, take one part of the fence and turn that into a gate.
Bubbled up to me yet, but I'll follow up on it.
Thank you. Second to all discussion, I have to say this morning, Mr. Chair, I will try to bring it over to you.
Okay, let's take a short ten-minute recess and we'll come back for the school board portion of it. Okay, I think we'll, we'll go ahead and get started. The first item on the, on the school board agenda is the volunteer application fee. And I think that Ms. Reynolds asked that we review this, and so thank you for being here and helping us review this item.
Okay, so we, I brought backup, by the way. It's not that scary. We presented this last month and there were a few outstanding questions. So I went back and watched the video and gathered those questions, I wanted to go through them specifically to make sure I'm addressing exactly what it was still, you were still wanting to know. So one of the questions was how many volunteers we've approved and at what cost in the last five years? We did provide a year-by-year breakdown through Ms. Worbington, but just to give you, over the last five years, we processed nine thousand one hundred and eighty-six volunteers through the FDLE. They have each paid twenty-five dollars for a total of two hundred and twenty-nine thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars. Of that, two hundred and twenty thousand, four hundred and sixty-four dollars has gone to pay for their level one backup, background check, which is required in the volunteer policy. So that leaves, the remainder is ninety-one thousand dollars, ninety, nine thousand one hundred and eighty-six dollars, which equates to one dollar per volunteer that we're collecting, that we're not sending to FDLE. We collect that one dollar per volunteer to pay for their handbook and their badge. But as we talked about last week, the actual cost of the handbook and badge is a dollar eighty-five. So we're collecting less than we're actually spending to provide those materials. So I wanna make sure that we were covered on that topic. The other question that was posed is what is required by our policy and what is required by our law? Policy ninety-two hundred, the volunteer policy says two things. It says that volunteers will undergo a level one background check, the FDLE. But then it also references the state statute one zero one two point three one five, which lists employment eligibility requirements. One of those being that you could not have committed a criminal act in another state or under federal law, which would be considered a, an offense prohibited under the state statute. So we say level one, which covers state, but we also reference the employment eligibility, which says that you could not have committed a lawless of offenses in another state. That's what's in our volunteer policy. In addition to, so that's policy. We are also required by law to, that volunteers have to undergo the national background screening to check for sexual offenders and sexual predators, which is what happens currently. When anyone goes through to a school, they swipe their license at the Raptor system, that's what that's doing. So policy and law covered that. The other question, is there redundancy between the FDLE level one and the national background check that we were proposing using Raptor to manage our volunteer system? The answer is no. FDLE is all the state data, they do, they then report up to the FBI. In order to get that, we could get that through a national search, a national background search through the National Crime Information Center, but that would be at a higher cost than what we are proposing. What we're proposing is to do the FDLE level one, which again is in our policy, and then do a national background search through the vendor, which they compile using a wide array of information and sources, including Department of Corrections, federal, state, local, wanted fugitive list, Office of Foreign Assets, Control Department of Public Safety, Administrative Office of Reports. Those are the main ones, correct? So, no, there is not redundancy, we could not just do the national that we're proposing and capture the FDLE data. The, another question that came from Mr. Harris was the value of the volunteers' time. We did some research, we equate that in seventeen eighteen, the volunteer, the value of our volunteers' time was five million, over five million dollars. We have added that to the website, to one of our, our district sites. And when we do our volunteer appreciation campaign, which happens in April, that will be a widely publicized figure. So we're adding that to district material, promotional materials, and that will be a focus, a featured data point in our campaign in April. Other sources of funding, we are still waiting on the answer of whether Title I funds could be used for this. It looks extremely promising, I spoke with Maria Longa yesterday, she's extremely optimistic that we will be able to use Title I funding to cover this increase in costs. I believe I've answered all your questions from last time, and I will certainly take any others, yes.
So, Ms. Reynolds, since this was your item, any comments or questions?
I, thank you for all of that information, I appreciate it. Is, the, last time we had, you had mentioned that it was in our policy that it could not be subsidized?
The policy says it has to be at volunteers' expense. Wes and I had some discussion on how that could be interpreted yesterday and whether that needs to be changed.
Cause I think the biggest thing is I would like to see that changed.
That we know that some schools are subsidizing it already, and we know some schools are doing, after you volunteer a certain number of hours, they'll reimburse you. So that language could be interpreted, that is just not that the district is outright covering this cost for volunteers, but we know on a school-by-school basis that they are, many of them are finding ways to cover it.
Okay, cause I, at one point last year, one of my schools was told no, that it couldn't cover it, so, because it has to be at the volunteers' expense. Because they were trying to do a fundraiser to be able to cover it. So I would like to get that out of policy, that it has to be at the volunteers' expense. So I would like to get that out of policy, that it has to be at the volunteers' expense.
We, we discussed the possibility of turning it around and instead of saying it, it shall be at the, at the volunteers' expense, saying that it shall not be paid for our budget of funds, something like that.
District expense.
Which means you could do fundraising for it.
Yeah, I.
Well, otherwise you got to budget some funds for it.
Yeah. Let's talk about that.
Up to you.
Yeah.
But that, that was the, that was the reason why the language was in there in the first place. If you wish to budget some funds for it, you can absolutely do that.
I mean, I think this is probably one of the most important services that we provide to any of our schools above some of the textbooks and, I mean, every principal that I go to, the number one thing they ask me for is volunteers and mentors. So I can't imagine that it ends up being an average of less than fifty-dollar, fifty thousand dollars a year, which in our budget, I feel like there's somewhere that we should be able to find. There's, there's something that we're doing that is not as important as this. I thought it's just my perspective on it.
Mr. Townsend?
I think, I think Board Leader Harris is first.
I apologize. Mr. Harris?
Jeanette, I know you have handled the volunteer program for a number of years and, and this question is kind of a historical question about the current, uh, question. Have there been a lot of schools that the PTA has stepped up and funded part of it or they have done fundraisers? How pervasive has there been in involvement at the local school level to help people fund this expense?
Good question. I think that there's been a lot of help, even from business partners that have helped for their employees to go into the schools. You know, Mid-Florida is one, that has several volunteers that go in through the Gift of Reading Program. And then I know there's a lot of churches that help their, the congregation or those that want to go in and help. And then the PTA, PTO too. So I do know that there is help and it is happening currently in these cases.
Have we not encouraged that because of policy?
No. Yeah, I mean, I think it's great when companies can step up and allow their employees to go out and volunteer and mentor and they're willing to pay for it. You know, reading pilots, they do that and they encourage and they, they can pay for those. There's other, B O C C has some reading initiatives that they, you know, pay for their employee, or their volunteers to come in through the Tell Taylor Program. So there are other, you know, businesses and companies and programs that are already doing that and it's, it's encouraged. I mean, if, if they can do that, then.
Well, if I'm understanding correctly, Ms. Reynolds' question or suggestion was to have a budget line item that would fund the additional fifteen dollars and maybe your connections with the community and with the schools work on the first twenty-five dollars, which might be a good compromise that both people have skin in the game, if you will. The actual volunteer slash PTA fundraisers at schools and their employers and the district's putting in some of the money too. Just a thought.
Mr. Townsend?
Well, I think by definition, volunteers have skin in the game. They have five million, five million dollars worth of their time in the, in the game. I got to tell you, like, let me ask this. Tell me, tell me why, 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 why we couldn't do this? This is all driven by security, which is a capital quack. I, I shouldn't, we're paying for a bunch of security stuff from capital. Why can't we roll this into a cap, a capital expense and just cover the whole thing? It'd be seventy thousand dollars a year to, to, for, for five million dollars worth of volunteer hours? I mean, that, that, why can we not do that? Who's, 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 who's going to ding us for, for that?
Because all of our capital funds, you can't pay for services, you have to pay for products, so it would, it would be an ineligible item under capital funding.
Well then.
It would be considered an operational type of expense and it's just, it's just not allowable under capital funding.
And, and, and who would, who would make that determination? Like what, what's the, what's the governing body? Well, how, how, how much do we, like, I mean, we're about to spend four-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars on a time, timekeeping system. You know, I, seventy thousand dollars a year to take care of all of our vol, vol, volunteers seems like a pretty good inv, investment. We just make that a general line item out of the, I mean, you wouldn't even notice that in the fund, fund balance. Whatever it takes to pay that, I think we, we should do, I mean, there's, how, how much, how much do we spend on, on week three? Like, I mean, is, is that all privately funded?
Some of it, not all of it.
I mean, I, I just think that's.
I have, I have to, I have to know the line item I spent for week three all the time.
No, 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 it's, I'm, I'm, that's more rhetorical, but, but, you know, I, I'm with, I'm with Mr. Deputy Commissioner, Board, 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 Board Leader. I don't know why.
You just got a promotion.
I don't know. Says who? A promotion?
Promotion.
I, I, this is probably the best ROI we get on anything we spend. So let's find a way to do, do that.
Ms. Sellers?
I just, I think maybe we could work with Polk Education Foundation. This, you know, this has been near and dear. I paid my fee though, so that I could fight not to have it paid. I didn't want people to think I was doing it for a personal thing because I fight to get volunteers and mentors. I see so much need for kids needing an adult to, to give them support through the school system. But Polk Education Foundation, they raise money. Could we work with them for them to get benefactors and, and they hold the pot of money that pays for volunteers? That way it wouldn't be a budgeted item here, but I just, I, I think Polk Education Foundation could find some people that see the value of this. Donations are made, campaigns when money's left over. I know that's where mine went the last time I ran, just to Polk Education Foundation. There could be a, a effort there and maybe if we partnered with them, we could come with the funds. Because I really don't want anybody not to volunteer because of a twenty-five or a forty-dollar fee. And it's not, I am not looking at y'all because you're following our policy.
Right.
This is not, not your issue. I just think that it's an uphill battle to get people to commit their time and I don't want to see any barriers because I've never seen such a need for adults to come in and work with our kids. But I also see the need for security. I would never not want to do everything of the age we live in. That's got to be utmost, safety has to be the utmost thing that we look at. But I really think that you, Polk Education Foundation might be a route we could go and get them to work with us on getting a fund source for this.
And Ms. Pleasant, did I, did I understand that some of it may be covered by Title One? Did I understand that?
Yes. It's advanced to the top round of approval, so we're very, as long as it says it's a really good sign.
So here's what I would offer. Let's see what part of it we can cover through Title One and then what, what can't be covered, let's go to the P E F and ask them. I'm sure they can run a campaign to cover the rest of it.
What?
But we have the other issue and that is the policy. We may, it may need some clarification, right?
Yes.
Ms. Cunningham?
I, I just wanted to share, and my memory may not be, my memory may not be that great, but this came about a few years ago when we were looking, the district was looking at furloughs and we were looking at all available funding sources. If my memory's correct, somebody please correct me if I'm wrong. And that's when the district started charging for the volunteer. There was a lot of, a lot of pushback then, but that was the reason that those, those charges started is because we were looking at a huge shortfall in our budget back around two thousand eight, two thousand nine. Jeanette and I spent a lot of time talking over the last week and I really think this would be a perfect opportunity for a business to step up and, and, and really offer to, to pay. I mean, we're talking forty, fifty thousand dollars. This would be a great advertisement for, for a business to step up. You know, as we, as we search options like Title One, this might be a valid option.
Yeah. Jeanette and I have also spoken about, we wanted to kind of get through this meeting, but developing some materials will disseminate through the chambers to try to get some business support, a naming opportunity.
Right.
To solicit some support on our own, separate from the, you know, go through P E F, but we could also initiate a campaign. And we've talked about a plan. We were kind of wanting to see how this played out today before we started doing that, but.
Ms. Cunningham?
Yeah, that's, was going to be my comp. Always looking for an opportunity for sponsorship and then you accomplish two things. It's a win-win both with the business, if it's called the, I hate to use the name, Publix Mosaic, pick one, you know, Volunteer Engagement Program. It gives them that opportunity, it helps us. So my question is, where do we go from here? We've had a lot of things discussed. Are we now on wait, on hold? Till we get more info or? And I hate that this happened after the fact, after everything's gone out and everybody's, you know, the ruckus has started and here we are. I wish we could have had.
I asked the question before.
It's okay.
Didn't get a response.
You didn't? Oh, okay. I'm sorry, I did, I didn't recall that. I think it's very important with things like this, when we're looking at impacting, you know, our communities, that it's something that we vet internally first before it, it hits the public. Because, but hopefully we can find a way, a win-win to where, what are you going to do for the people who've already jumped on the bandwagon and gone ahead and paid their twenty? I mean, it just opens up a whole Bailey Week. So I don't know if you say starting January one, but I guess that's in your purview to figure out the, the minutia. But let's make sure that we do something that is going to be positively and impacts those who have already jumped through the hoops to get the advantage, you know. But I, I, I would agree with my colleagues, there's nothing more important than mentors and coaches and people that come in and volunteer in our schools every single day and how desperately we continue to need them. P E F just sent another email out, what was it, last week or the week before, looking for help in, in several schools for several children. So it's an ongoing thing. So I agree with everybody. I just wish we could quickly do this so that, because this November, unless you put out there that the November one deadline no longer, I mean, I don't know. You all have to come up with that. Just keep us in the loop because there's a lot of angst in the community over this whole thing. Let me just say that.
Ms. Fields?
I was wondering, I think that this is something that we definitely need to pursue. I know we talked last time about the GiveWell Community Foundation. I don't know if you guys had any conversation with them, but I think it should be a combination of getting community support and then the difference coming from our budget if necessary.
Okay.
So here, here's what I'm hearing. We're, we're going to let you devise a plan to fund it and come back with us, come back to us with a plan. And if you can't, if we can't get the business community, what I'm hearing is that we're willing to do it. I think, Madam Superintendent, do you have some thoughts about that?
No, I'm going to look at some different funding.
Okay.
Things, but I think the first thing we need to do is to tap into those businesses. And I have a conversation with Susan.
And, and the second thing we need to do, of course, is address the policy.
Yes.
Right? So how do we proceed with that? Mr. Bridges, can you help us with that?
Well, there's no, no requirement to go forward at this point. There's not a, a time, a time constraint by which you have to have it done, other than fast. So we can, we can take the, the, the advice and counsel of the board back and, and craft changes and bring it back to you and, and sort of re-initiate the process.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Townsend?
I just, the, again, I, I'll go ahead and do all of the efforts to fund it if you want, but we talk about, there are literally thousands of things that we value more than our volunteers because we're paying for them. Like, your budget is a statement of your priorities. This is a, probably a seventy thousand dollar a year line item with, with the increase that wipes away a massive hurdle to engaging in our schools like that. I mean, we, we spend, we sign seventy thousand dollar contracts every board meeting. Why on earth would we not just do it? And, you know, it's, 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 it's not going to be, it's not going to make the fiscal difference between living and dying here, you know? Like, I mean, what are, why chase the businesses down and ask them to pay for something that we could pay, pay for? I, I don't, that, that, and, you know, your budget is your statement of prior, priorities. I, I support making this a, a budget, budget line. If we have to fill some, not fill some, some position that comes out to seventy thousand dollars, then maybe we do that. But I don't, I don't even think we do that, just take it out of, you know, be a tiny fragment of the fund, fund balance. And, and it's not like it's going to grow. I mean, it's not going to grow radically. You know, it's, we're going to know roughly what the amount's going to be. Seventy, seventy-five, eight thousand dollars a year in perpetuity for a giant return on investment. And I, you know, the, the idea that we're going to ask the community to pay for the right to help us is very strange to me. And that's.
And I'd like to respond to that. I, I think we have agreed to do exactly what you're saying. I think that we, we, we want to first go to the businesses because there, this is one of the things that businesses will sponsor.
That's right.
That they would like to sponsor, that they would say, hey, we want to put this on our resident sponsoring. So this could be, could be one of those things that we could get some help from the community and, and they would be happy to do that.
I guess, that's what I'm saying, is my intent would be to reduce this, this fee to zero for, for our people.
That's what we're saying.
Okay, not, not just for the company.
If the community pay don't, then we pay for it.
We're talking about doing it. I think what I'm hearing from the board, we want to do that.
Okay. I, I, I thought I heard some, some.
We just want to see if we can get some help from the community first.
Yes.
The November first going up date, are we, if we're looking at covering this, going to go up to forty dollars for a month until we do? Or are we just going to leave it at twenty-five until we can get this approved? Do we need to have?
Well, because we need, we need a system to manage the volunteers and so we're kind of hobbling along with this Genesis system that they compiled together to get us until we had, see, this new system comes with a volunteer management system to log hours so we can report up to the state. So right now, volunteer coordinators are doing that on paper in binders and it's, we need to get them a system, some volunteer, because we have to, we are accountable to state as far as our volunteer hours. So we don't have a management system in place. And that's part of what Raptor will be able to provide.
I think the board is asking, can you adjust the November one date until you come back? Because we're looking at a couple of weeks. So can we now just go to, until we can get a definitive answer in our direction, let's just go to January?
Okay.
We got a good recommendation, just to write down until we can get back. And if we have to adjust, then we'll come back and adjust it.
Okay, so. I don't necessarily. So we have to change January to find a business sponsor is what, what means it?
It's not going to increase before January.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, I, I mean, as far as going ahead and moving to Raptor, I think that's something if it's making it easier to manage our volunteers, it's something we need to do.
Yeah.
Go ahead and do it, but we'll cover the fifteen dollars.
I don't think we can use Raptor without increasing.
Right, because they were doing the level. They were doing.
Well, can, I guess that's my question, is can we cover that fifteen dollar fee until we find business sponsors?
Exactly.
Is that?
We'll, we'll find a way.
Okay.
Right. Because you need to be up and running as quick as possible on the system.
We don't want to slow you guys down.
No, not at all.
We just want to make sure we're taking care of volunteers.
We just want to pay the bill.
Right.
So initiate Raptor in November?
Yes, yes.
But the district will cover the fifteen dollar difference?
Yes.
Until such time as we could go out and get someone to hopefully sponsor a part of it.
And knowing this, we, we've committed to this. So if we can't find a business partner, we're, we're going to have to do it.
We're going to have to do it ourselves.
The whole fee or the fifteen?
The whole. We're talking about the whole thing.
The whole thing, the whole thing.
Right.
We're talking about the whole thing. So, so with, the plan is to see if we can get some Title One help and, and if not, well, either way, to see if we can supplement that or maybe do the whole thing to business and ultimately then if we can, then we fall back on the, on the budget. I think that's the, what I'm hearing from the board. Does that work for you?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Ms. Sellers?
We should at the October board meeting set aside policy, so we're not breaking our policy.
Good point.
To, so we'll vote at, to set aside policy so that, and, and we really, I mean, we leave it alone right now until we can take official board action because right now we have a policy that says we can't. So we leave it, but we meet October twenty-fifth, or somewhere then. We set aside the policy. or somewhere then. We set aside the policy and that will, and we can decide at that board meeting whether they charge nothing or, that we take it on as a district. As a, and that's before the November first. But-
What, what I'm hearing is that the board wants to change the policy, not set aside.
Yes. But, we'll set us, if we can't get it changed by either, by then, we just set aside policy.
That's the next thing.
If I can, I can bring that, the changes, let's say, at no cost to volunteer to you at the October twenty-third work session. And we would be able to have a full board approve of it at the December board meeting with our timeline.
You could bring it to us in, at, in the October board meeting?
In November, yeah.
So, then we can vote on it in November.
In November, you mean, not December.
She's saying we could bring it, she could bring it back to, back?
So, we have to have two hearings for policy. The first one would be at the October twenty-third work session. And then the board would be able to do a final hearing at the December board meeting because we have to have twenty-eight days to advertise it.
So, we'll set aside policy.
And so, a policy going to effect, saying at no cost to volunteer, would go into effect when?
December.
At the December work session.
Okay.
But, I would say January one, let's say.
We have to have a way to have no costs. Okay, either through business or district budget. Okay.
So, we'll set aside policy.
Sorry? I can't pay that much rent. Or, any rent, actually. Um, okay. Understood.
Any other questions? Collins? All right.
Shall we run into the next thing?
Please do. And Ms. Fields brought this forward. It has to do with the policy itself and whatever he's on it, he'll bring this up at this moment, so.
Yeah, my side too. Did you, did you mean, did you deny?
It just not, yes.
My side too.
So, the next-
I think I'm going to work it to Ms. Kendra and to Mr. Bridges, not to them.
Okay.
I had a, a parent who approached me about not being able to volunteer in his child's school. Uh, and he had once been a community coach. And he had had several traffic citations and he had not taken care of those. And ended up getting a misdemeanor. And he had adjudication with help. And so, now he's in a place where he cannot volunteer to go on field trips with his daughter. Uh, we understand the value of safety. Uh, but a traffic citation to me does not have any bearing on a child being safe. Uh, and so, I talked to Ms. Jackie about it. And then I spoke to Ms. Kendra and then realized that there were more, he's not the only one that's having problems with being able to volunteer his child's school. So, I met with Wes and we looked at the policy. And there seems to be some conflict in the way that it's written. And so, Wes can maybe explain that a little bit better than, than I would be able to do, since he has a legal mind and not me.
Thank you, ma'am. Uh, you'll recall, uh, this, this all started back when the legislature adopted the Jessica Lunsford Act. And you'll recall that we, at that time, were required to adopt policies having to do with background, uh, background checks for employees and contractors. And at that time, it was very much the same sort of atmosphere that we had this year with, with Marjory Stone and Douglas. School districts were, were rushing with a great sense of urgency to adopt, to adopt laws. And everybody was sort of in a contest to see who could be tougher on crime, uh, just like, just like the legislature. And we ended up with a, a, a policy. There was some debate at that time. The state had set out a laundry list of offenses that were disqualified. And there was debate over whether to adopt that laundry list or just more broadly say, you know, if you want, you know what, if you got a felony, you can't come work for us. Uh, if you got a misdemeanor within this period of time, you can't come work for us. It's tougher than what the state required, but that is the standard that Polk County adopted. It was one of the tougher standards in the state. Um, and we, and we still have that language in, in Polk County. Rather than having a laundry list of felonies and a shorter list of misdemeanors, we just say, if you've ever had a felony, you're disqualified. If you've had a misdemeanor within the past three years or have unadjudicated offenses, uh, unadjudicated charges, you're ineligible. And then, we adopted a volunteer stat, uh, policy. Now, the statute on volunteers says basically, they've gotta go, go through a, um, a sexual predator check. And, and, and that's, that's the statutory requirement. They're not statutory required to go through a level one or a level two background screening. I think wisely, there was a, a discussion about, you know, why would you have a different standard for, for volunteers than you would have for contractors or for employees? If they're going to be with your children, you know, they, they ought, there ought to be some, some parity there. And there's some language in the statute that, that grant, grants some flexibility for contractors if they're within the line of sight, direct supervision of, of someone who has passed a, a level two background screening. Difficulty with that is, when, when you're fifty school sites and additional sites, uh, when you're on field trips and whatnot, there's no practical way to guarantee that any, any employee, contractor or volunteer will be within the line of sight one hundred percent of the time, especially when you've got restrooms and cafeterias and, and all that sort of thing. So, so we ended up with a, a volunteer policy that read very similarly to the one that we use for, for employees, which said, if you, if you've ever been convicted of felony, you can't be a volunteer. If you've been convicted of a misdemeanor within the past three years, you can't volunteer. Um, in, in discussions with Mrs. Fields and certainly with our community relations department and with Mrs. Dodge, uh, you know, we, we still have one of the tougher standards in the state. Uh, our policy is one that is unique to Polk. Um, no one else has this language. Uh, when we, when I talked to Amanda Clapp at Neola, she refers to this as the Polk language. Uh, they, they have a template that they use in which you can determine whether you're going to, uh, in, in their template, you, you either check that volunteers will be subject to a background check against FDLE sex predator, sex offender registry, that's the statutory requirement, or volunteer applicants who will work with students in unsupervised manner, out of sight hearing of supervising staff are required to pass level two. And all volunteer chaperones on any school sponsored trip, including overnight day trips, must pass level two criminal background screening. We treat chaperones on field trips as school volunteers. So, that's, that's where we are. It's how we got there. Um, it is, it is certainly possible to use a less rigorous standard for, for volunteers. Um, if you do that, you're, you're in the same boat that the legislature is when they take a get tough on crime stance and then they back off of it. It's very difficult to do. Now, I will tell you that when we adopted, uh, those, those policies in the wake of Jessica Lunsford, we had a different environment in our county. And back then, the question was, you know, and, and this was something that the board, superintendent and the H R director at the time, there was a great deal of conversation about this. It was not a decision that was made lightly. But, um, but they looked at it and I think that the end, the end analysis was, we have an abundance of fully qualified applicants for all positions. So, we can afford to be more restrictive than the law requires. So, because at that time, people were lined up to do, people wanted jobs, they were lined up to do everything that we had. We, we could, we could have this, this strict standard of review for background checks and still have, um, a, a completely, completely full slate of employees. We had that, that backlog of people who, of fully qualified people who could pass it. Um, these days, as you know, we're, we're in a great competition for, for qualified employees. Um, and we may not have an adequate number of, of employees. And it may be that this standard is keeping some folks who might otherwise be able to either work for us or volunteer for us from being able to do so. So, it's, it's certainly fair game to have the conversation, but, but bear in mind that, that having had a strict standard, if you back off of that standard and if there is, um, an unfortunate incident, that is something that will be brought back to us and, uh, very, very vocally by, by, for the money or somebody. It sounds-
Could we just adopt the Neola language? Because that's highly respected, that-
We, we certainly can. We, the Neola language, once again, gives you options.
Yes.
And you can adopt one of those options. Um, if you do, if you do adopt the level two background screening language that they use, then that will take you back to that litany of offenses that's set forth in the statute. And they largely have to do with, uh, with, with battery and sexual offenses and crimes against minors and the other way. Um, and, and a host of, of, you know, serious crimes that we don't see every day, you know, the murders and kidnappings, things like, things like that. But, but it does not capture shoplifting and, and DUI and reckless driving and, and things like that. Right now, when you say misdemeanor, it captures all of those things. If you, if you look at the, at the statutory language, uh, in, um, where it's stat, whatever the number is, uh, it, it gives you the, the litany of offenses and then a shorter list of misdemeanors, all having to do with lewd and lascivious type of things. So, we, you could, you could do that and it would, instead of screening against all felonies and all misdemeanors, all felonies forever and ever, I'm in, all misdemeanors for three years, it would be against the, the list of felonies that's been published in that, in the level two statute.
Ms. Fields?
I failed to mention that this happened like twenty-plus years ago. So, it's not anything that's happened over the last few years. And then, Ms. Kendra, can you kind of tell us, maybe, I didn't, I don't wanna put you on the spot, how many others might be impacted, just in a similar, is this gentleman?
Uh, this gentleman is also one of our volunteer coaches as well. And so, when we looked at other volunteer coaches that are similarly situated, probably about five or six of them in addition.
Ms. Cunningham?
Do we change a policy for five or six individuals?
I don't think that I'm asking that. What I'm saying is this, we need to make sure that our parents are able to be involved in their child's education. He's not asking to be a community coach. He's just asking if he can go on a field trip with his daughter for something that he did twenty-plus years ago. He failed to, to take care of a traffic citation. And because of that, he was adjudicated. But, because of the way our policy is written, he can't go on field trip with his baby. So, I'm not, I'm not saying we're setting aside the policy for him to be a community coach. I'm saying so that he can go with his baby on a field trip, just like we would want to go now. That's all that I'm saying. Just consideration.
You, you don't have to be an approved volunteer to go on a field trip with your child, to accompany your child. But, that's not what-
I, I misunderstood. I thought, I thought that people chaperoning field trips-
Yep.
They do. Chaperoning, but if you're accompanying your child.
If you're in a public space, we can't tell them, they can't go to La La Land, they can't go to-
Well, and I, I wanna be careful because-
Order, order, order.
Yeah, I wanna be careful to make, to make sure that, make sure that we're on the same page. Um, and, and forgive me, I was unaware that, that we have two, two different categories there. I, my, my assumption, and we all know what happens when you assume, uh, was that if you are, if you're chaperoning a field trip, you have to be an approved school volunteer, correct?
Yes, sir.
And I was unaware that we had people that were going on field trips who were not chaperones. And, and why, and, and I'll just lay it out there on the table. Um, as, as far as, as damage to a child goes, does it matter whether it's done by, by someone we call a chaperone or someone that we call accompanying a field trip? Um, yeah, we ought to have, we ought to have protections in to make sure that the people who are, you, you can't, you can't look at, at the two people sitting in the charter bus to tell which one's a chaperone and which one's just going on a field trip.
Well, I mean, I think, I think the issue is really, how do we ensure that those folks who have citations that are twenty years old aren't, aren't-
I, I agree. And, and Mrs. Fields has a very good point. If you have, and I, my ears as a prosecutor are too far behind me. I don't recall what, what is required. But, there are circumstances under which, you know, if you, if you have an accumulation of misdemeanor traffic offenses, um, such that you are, they deem you a habitual offender or whatever, that can be charged as a felony. And I'm sure that's what's going on in this case. It happened years and years ago, traffic offenses that had nothing to do with risk to the student, but were charged as a felony. And because of that, they are permanently disqualified. And once again, if you, if you just, if you go back to the level two screening, instead of saying felonies generally, you've got the list of felonies, um, then there are a lot of people who would be, then eligible that are not right now, including this gentleman. Right now, uh, he is filtered out by Polk Unique policy that says, if you have ever been convicted of any felony, you are forever barred. And I'm not, I'm not aware that there are other districts that, uh, that, that go that far. Certainly, if you're convicted of, of felony on the list. But, but I'll, just as, as an example, that list is sexual battery, sexual activity with solicitation of child, unlawful sexual activity with certain minors, prostitution, lewdness and decent exposure, arson, voyeurism, you know, um, things like that. Um, and violent crimes. Uh, they don't, they don't really have, they're not germane to traffic offenses. And I, and I, and I'm not sure that when we, that when we adopted this, anybody was thinking about misdemeanors that could be lumped together and then subsequently discharged as a felony.
Ms. Harris, I'm gonna get to you in just one, but Mrs. Portis had a, had a comment I wanted to-
Specific to this case, he is trying to be a chaperone. And so, that's why he was denied. So, just wanted to clarify that point.
Thank you. Mr. Harris?
A couple of observations. Uh, one, I think I implore my colleagues to think about risk versus reward. Wes has alluded to that a couple of times. Um, I don't see a multitude of traffic offenses as the issue. I see a thumb in your nose at the law. When you have traffic citations and you don't deal with them, then you're thumbing your nose at the law. And that's a different kind of mentality in person that has a traffic offense and pays their dues. The other point, and this is a historical point for those of you who weren't around in the Jessica Lunsford issue, we ended up with this type of policy that you see on your screen in front of you because the state had a list of crimes, if you will, that many elected officials in the state of Florida couldn't serve because of. Some sitting in this county. That went away and this replaced it. To give you a historical perspective of how we ended up here. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I wanna address a couple of things. The, the fact that he can't go on the field trip, that's not, it, the chaperone part is, whenever a school goes to like La La Land, they'll group three to five kids together and say, here, Mr. so-and-so, take these children and go away. Um, so, that's the chaperone portion of it. If he wanted to go with his child and accompany his child on the field trip, he is more than welcome to show up there, take his child and go ride the rides and do the field trip with his child. It's the point of not having other children that are stranger to him with him out in this park unsupervised.
And the other piece to that, um, 'cause I do it a lot, is once you're a chaperone for one of those events, and we go wherever we go, the end of the day, the question becomes, do you want to go back on the bus with the group or are you going back with the parent? So, if I'm a chaperone, more than likely, you know, Sarah Beth's child and Jackie's child would say, yeah, go ahead and just bring them back to the school or just take them home for me or whatever. So, it's a two-part. It's a, during the day, we're all together, but then you also have the opportunity as a chaperone to take those children home if it's approved by the parents. And if somebody's an approved chaperone for the county, it's seen as a different level, I guess. So, I, that's where my concern is.
I was on a field trip, not as an approved volunteer. And I was not allowed to drive my own children home from La La Land. They had to ride the bus because I wasn't a volunteer.
Approved it. But, I'm saying if this person would be-
Yeah.
Then you're allowed.
But, there's a separate process for transporting children, right?
Yeah. But, I mean, if that's done ahead of time and, and the teacher knows, 'cause they'll come up and they'll say, okay, you know, Ms. Cunningham, you're taking, that I say, yes, I've got those kids and I'm also taking them home. 'Cause that's been pre-arranged. So, the chaperone is allowed to do that, provided it's pre-arranged and signed off by the parents.
The list. I, I just wanna go on and say that there are several on here that are very concerning, like grand theft, burglary, possession of methamphetamine. Those are not covered by the list. And I think it's all-inclusive.
DUI for me.
Right.
Yeah.
There, there are several on here or that are not on the list that he keeps referring to that are covered by your policy saying all felonies. Um, which I, I mean, just 'cause of my position is a good thing to me. But, I do understand the people that are saying, twenty-five years ago, I made a terrible mistake. So, I mean, if you wanted to go and put a time limit on it, I mean, I'm, I'm kind of in favor for that. But, I like that we're catching all felonies and covering with the, 'cause you have people that are handling money as volunteers in your school- as volunteers in your school systems. And you don't want the grand theft, you know, on their record and they're in there counting thousands of dollars for PTO. That's just my suggestion on that.
And I would offer, the concerns I've heard from parents were instances where they just wanted to go with their child. They weren't, the reason they weren't able to attend apparently now, as I'm understanding it, is because they wanted, they'd signed up as chaperones, which is another issue. And what I'm hearing is that we can say to them, you can go with your child, you just can't go as a chaperone. Which I think will probably make a lot, yes, ma'am.
The difference is, at least from my experience having a kid in school, if you go as a chaperone, then you're able to get the discounted rate that's been offered to the school and to the children. Whereas if I go in and I buy, have to buy my ticket, it may be ten, fifteen dollars more, so that's what.
You're not with the group, you're just with your child.
Right, you're just coming in, grabbing your kid, and he or she may want, not want that because now we're separated, we're not with the little groups where we can all play together and have these experiences. So it's a fine line, I don't know.
There, we let the volunteers know that are denied, that there's a lot of opportunity to still be involved. I mean, you can go to orientation, you know, have lunch with your child, I mean, parents' night, so.
Book fair?
There's book fair, I mean, there's a lot of opportunity to still be involved, and we encourage that. You know, we still want you to be involved as well. So we do give them other, you know, options and, you know, speak with them on a daily basis too, to let them know what other things they could do.
Ms. Fields?
Well, you know, I'm not going to beat with that horse with this situation. But in reference to paying the ticket obligation, you're right, Mr. Harris, you should have. And he said that. I was young, I was, I didn't handle it properly. If I had to do it all over again, I wouldn't do it differently. So you're absolutely right, Harris. He is very remorseful for that. Personally, I don't think that a person should not give a chaperone their child's field trip because of a traffic citation. Twenty plus years ago, where is mercy? Maybe we don't understand mercy. I don't see where it's danger, there's no danger. He didn't do anything that would jeopardize any child. But I, you know, at the end of the day, whatever the board brings on, is willing to consider, that's fine. Because, you know, we have to be in agreement. Might not agree, but it's okay to disagree.
Mr. Councilor?
Couple of things. I like the idea of studying a time limit. I think that's, I mean, so, here's right, we have a three-year time limit on misdemeanors?
Right, with the exception of those misdemeanors that are contained on the statutory list, which are permanently disqualifying those individuals.
Right, now, are those part of the Polk policy or would we have to adopt the list?
Right now, our policy is all felonies forever, all misdemeanors for three years. So if you want to back off of that, you're going to have to come up with a mechanism to do it. One way of doing it is to adopt statute, but as Captain said, when you do that, you're dropping a number of felonies that might be of concern to the board. Or you can adopt a different list, or you can adopt the list and supplement it by saying, you know, offenses that are not on the list are disqualifying for a period of time.
How is a traffic citation a felony?
Right, that's my question.
The more complicated you make it, the more difficult it is going to be to implement.
What, so, so, I mean, one of the reasons I raised this is from somebody who was trying to figure out if he was eligible to be hired as a teacher. And I'm not taking a side one way or the other, but there was some difficulty getting clarity on what his eligibility was. So, like, you know, what I would generally like to see is us as closely aligned as possible to the state. I understand, I mean, if we have a three-year period on misdemeanors, why not have a ten-year period on, yeah, I'm, with subject to certain lists, it's kind of, what's that?
That's going to be a challenge.
Well, I mean, other districts do it, I'm curious, let me in. Well, tell me, more the misdemeanor thing again. So it's three-year misdemeanor, and then you're eligible, but, because it sounds like what you say, no matter what you've done in the misdemeanor, you're eligible now in Polk after three years.
Right, except for the disqualifying offense.
We actually have those disqualifying offenses in our policy.
Yeah, the statute applies no matter what. So we've got a statute that says, we've got these felonies that are disqualifying and these misdemeanors. And we also have the reference in policy that says you're disqualified if you're ineligible for employment, employment under ten, twelve, three, fifteen, which is that list, so it's covered.
Is there any mechanism for discretion, like, that we could build into? Like, it seems like we're talking about individual five, six kind of cases. Is there one where you can bring it before the board and say, you're, I'm just exploring, exploring that?
Not currently.
Could we, is there anything?
Mrs. Sellers?
I, we could add an exception for some of the felonies, like this kind of felony, traffic felonies, list out a specific number of felonies that only are a three-year or five-year term. That would keep the strength of the law, but catch some of these felonies that aren't child endangering and list them out as exceptions. So ours would be stronger than making the list, having the other list. But it also would both maybe for people wanting employment and families wanting to chaperone or be a volunteer, to put a time limit on those felonies that we don't consider child endangering.
I have a table here that's by another school district that I pulled. It's Orange County, so it's comparable in size. And ineligible to volunteer, it's basically cut and dry, ten, twelve, point three, one, five, which is the litany of lists, that big list. Statutory misdemeanor convictions under that list and any other pending misdemeanor cases is what it says. Ineligible to volunteer if you've been convicted of within the past twenty-five years, and then it goes into misdemeanor. And then they have a case-by-case basis also. So like, it lists out different, it says ineligible period. Eligible if within twenty-five years is the list of these felonies. And then there's a case-by-case basis that they list out. Any applicant convicted of a misdemeanor of more than five years, except those convicted of crimes within that statute. And then arrest charges for any crime involving violence, domestic violence, battery, et cetera, or drug offenses within the past ten years. So they list it out. And then I have Hillsboro too, which has lists. And if you guys wanted a list and maybe to, you know, spell it out more, instead of just doing away with the all felonies or just adopting the list, we could, you know, I could propose next time combining several districts and showing you something to look at.
Ms. Cunningham?
Okay, so, I think Mr. Wilson asked a minute ago, if it's a traffic citation, how does it become a felony?
Habitual traffic offender.
Habitual traffic offender.
Right, if you have someone who is, who either does it over and over again or fails to pay their fines and things, those things can be lumped together and it becomes a felony.
Okay.
So if you have, you know, if you're fourth, your third or fourth reckless driving, you're going to be charged as a felony. And if you have.
Okay, so it's not like this is just one incident of I didn't pay my traffic.
No, ma'am.
Okay, and I don't know the specifics and I know that's personal, but, I mean, if it's a habitual offender, five years, ten years, fifteen, twenty, I don't want him driving my kid or being near my kid.
And driving is a different issue. We have to, we've got some pretty good rules on that.
But this is, okay, anyways.
But well taken.
Yeah, I just, yeah.
When you say case-by-case, are you, is there actually, like, is that saying there's a discretion? Or what's the meaning of case-by-case?
Under the column that says case-by-case, it says any applicant convicted of a felony of more than twenty-five years, except those in the ten, twelve. Okay, so we could look at those on a case-by-case. Or any applicant convicted of a misdemeanor of more than five years, except those in the three, ten, twelve, three, one, five. Or arrest for the ones that I said, domestic violence, battery, or drug offenses within the past ten years.
Right, but I guess I'm not understanding what this, like, what case-by-case means. And that is, are they saying that you'll be given the ability to apply on a case-by-case basis? And someone will make a decision as to whether you're eligible or not? I mean, are they putting discretion in someone else's hands at the district level individually?
There is a volunteer appeals committee that has.
That's what we require. That's what we're looking for.
We have that currently.
Doing.
When someone is denied, we review them case-by-case.
Is there a mechanism?
It's just any felony of current language, any felony, we would uphold that denial.
Is there a mechanism, I wish that could be brought to the board to consider that decision? That we just may not, may not.
I would not be in favor of that.
You, if you, when you're to the board, I think you are creating.
Opening it up.
An appellate right under the Administrative Procedures Act, and that decision would be appealable to the Second District Court of Appeals. I don't think you wish to do that. I, personally, I think you're cleaner if you're able to come up with a schedule that is either disqualifying or not. And I think one risk we have is, as the captain has pointed out, is you, the more qualifiers, the more filters you put in this, the more like a flowchart it starts to look and the more difficult it is to implement with fidelity. And so those are things to think about as we do this.
I know Mrs. Dodge wants to add some, but just very quickly, one of the things we can do is we can send a message to this committee that we would like for them to be a little more lenient. Well, they can be a little.
Right now, I suspect that the committee looks to see whether there are errors. And sometimes there are, but I don't think they have much discretion beyond that in the face of a policy that says.
You don't get a chance to use your judgment on them.
The only thing that we've overturned in the past is, you know, identity theft, where they've been able to come to us with documentation, legal documentation, and then that's when we overturn.
Mrs. Dodge?
One thing that other districts our size do in policy is differentiate between the type of volunteer. So they have kind of level-one volunteers that are people who are going in at school and doing paperwork and stuff like that, which is different than a volunteer who's chaperoning children or doing things directly with children. And they hold the level-two volunteers to a higher standard, a more stringent standard than they do the level-one volunteers. And so that would be maybe a suggestion to.
Of course, if you do that, you then have to track people, you know, and, you know, put an armband on them or something so that you can figure out who's level-one and who's level-two.
It's a helpful discussion.
Tattoos.
So, I'm not sure where to go with this. It seems like.
Hold the board.
Are we, I guess the question is, are we happy with the current policy? Would we like to see a change? Is that the question?
Which one do you want answered?
The question is, are we happy with the current policy?
How many?
How many are happy with the current policy?
Raise your hand.
I am good with the current policy as well. I, my take on it would be if we have some sort of committee that has a little more discretion, I don't know how we make that work, but maybe Mr. Bridges and I are about that some more.
That's, for me, I would like to see if there's any room for human judgment at the, if there's not, fine. That's my main concern with policy, but if there's a way to build in some sort of human judgment, if not.
No, okay, okay, then we're moving on. So, thank you very much. We appreciate your.
We have learned a lot down there. For the wean, we're in the room.
Okay, so now it's time for a school board discussion, comments from school board members. And Mr. Councilor, you had some questions about.
Yeah, I have a couple of things, two things that I want to raise, just not necessarily discuss. But one is, and it kind of relates to the nutrition workers discussion today at the M L A and all of that. Apparently, we have something of a problem with non-air-conditioned kitchens. I've heard several, I mean, a couple, there's been one very, very persistent person at Southwest Elementary, and then not long after that, I've heard a completely unrelated one, I think it was at Eastside, I think. And, well, okay, that's.
They're getting it.
Well, what's the, what's the time, the timeline on that again? Do we have a?
Ms. Birdbeard?
Go ahead, Nick, go ahead.
We did, we have some units that we got from Borto for the renovation, and we'll be putting those immediately in seven schools. Including Southwest, Philip O'Brien, Eastside, Mandela, for our seven schools. And then we're starting on our projects. We do have some issues in, we have to coordinate closely with food service, and we've had meetings with them. When we start to redo it and we shut down the cafeteria and the kitchen, they'll have to bring food in from another school. So it's coordinating with them.
If that got stated in traffic somewhere, and I missed that, I apologize, but thank you, it's good. Secondly, one of the things I would like to discuss at some point, and it relates, there's some things about the air mark. We talked about having some work session related to that specifically, the square footage requirement. As I understand it, we have a, we require our custodians to work a larger square footage than the state recommends. And I think, you know, that's, that's an issue. And I would like to learn a little bit more about the history of that, what the implications of addressing that might be. I think that's something that the custodians are very concerned about, from what I understand from my discussions with them. So I, if we could throw that on for a work session, for a work design.
We'll add that as a work session. And if you don't mind, Mr. Councilor, the things that you have concerns about, if you would send those to the superintendent so she could have someone here to maybe address them?
And thoroughly kind of revisiting the point before about the, I would like to see, there was an email that went out that I believe inaccurately summarized the communication policy, at least one element of it. I think maybe the way to rectify that is just to send out the actual policy without characterization of it. You know, the characterization that went out is that all staff communication has to run through superintendent, all staff communications to the board. Whereas the policy doesn't say this, say that, talks about preferred, and it's kind of convoluted. I want to change that policy anyway to make it more practical, but we don't have to discuss that today. What I'm mostly interested in is getting an accurate reflection of what the policy says. I mean, I would like to see if the board is interested in having the accurate, the policy represented accurately.
Well, I am, I mean, if the policy isn't, if there's, is there, where's the policy better? We should do that.
I'm talking about the, leadership sent a summary of the policy that misstated the policy. The, when it said all communications must run through superintendent, that's not what the policy says. And I just want the accurate, I don't know what I was saying.
Well, could you recommend something?
Just put the actual policy out. I mean, like, it was, it's in a character, I think it's saying, this is the policy. You know, it would be nice if they said the summary misstated what the policy says, but if we can't do that, then just send out what the actual policy says.
Ms. Fields?
I think, well, a couple of years ago, I don't remember, we did a retreat, if my memory serves me correctly, and we had discussion about this policy. And I believe that the board members that were present at the time, and I don't remember who they were, we all agreed that any communication would be filtered through the superintendent. And then she would determine what staff would respond, if my memory serves me correctly. And so maybe that's where the confusion lies. Again, I don't remember specifically when, but I know that it's in the minutes somewhere. And maybe those minutes could be found as well, because I think that's where the confusion is.
Well, no, I think you may be misunderstanding what I'm saying.
No, I'm not misunderstanding what you're saying. You were saying that you want to have the policy in writing and communicate it.
I'm misunderstanding what you're saying, you were saying that you want to have the policy in writing and, and communicate it to the staff so that they'll know that it's preferred and not required.
Right, the, the.
Yeah, I understand what you're saying.
The, the policy that I, that I, that I remember being discussed in for, formally, was if we had, what, what, why said it would go through the super superintendent. The, the policy I'm talking about that went out is if a teacher or a staff mem, member or custodian or whomever wants to talk to a board, board, board member, the policy, the summary of the policy said that needs to go through the super intent, intent, and at first, that's not, that's not correct. And, and, I mean, that's, that's, I, I just want that corrected, just put the actual po, po, policy out. Unless we're saying that every communication from staff at teacher level, and from, 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 from teacher to administrator to whom, whomever, they have to send every communication they want to send to elected board, 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 board members through the su, superintendent. I don't, I don't think that's what we're trying to say. Uh, if, if, if it is, it's completely imprac, practical.
Well, it's rather awkward, frankly, because it, in most organizations, that would be the appropriate approach, but we're elected officials, so that makes things a little more.
Right.
Uh, challenging, because you, you can't tell a constituent that they're, that they can't contact their elected official. That's part of the challenge we, we run into with this, and it is, and is rather awkward.
Well, and we haven't said that, I mean, that's, that's not in any po, po, policy. All I'm trying to say is send, send the po, policy out, so that people, this is what the actual policy says.
I think you're referencing policy zero one four nine point three, if you want to look specifically at that policy.
All right, I'm, I'm perfectly fine just sending out that po, policy. Just saying, this is, this is the correct policy gov, governing communication. I mean, I'm going to seek to change that po, policy event, eventually, but for today, I just want the correct policy sent out.
Where, you'll excuse me, since we changed the website, do you know what the policies are?
Go under Communication.
Go to Community, School Board.
I would, I would read the, the difference in this, but I can't get my phone to pick it.
Is it, is it in the hub or no?
Nope.
No, you go to the website.
It's not a public facing website.
Community?
You go to Community?
Yep.
Right. School Board Policy.
And which, which one is it, Mr. Harris?
Zero one four nine point three, A and B. It's under bylaws. You go down to one forty membership, and you just go down to one forty nine point three, A and B. It's right there on our. This is Board Stash Staff, Board Staff Communications. You have two paragraphs, and you have A, and then you have B, I think that's what's being referenced. I believe that's what was quoted in the email that the staff received.
No, actually, um, there are personnel policies that were quoted, and it was thirty one, twelve, and then it's the same thing in the board staff, and the same thing in the administrative section.
All right, so this policy indicate, does say, the communication protocol is not intended to deny any staff member his or her constitutional right of free speech or the right to appeal to or otherwise address the board on important matters. Through established procedures, um, so it's a little more awkward for a school district than I think in many organizations, but, I mean, are you suggesting that this piece of it be sent out?
Just the, the, the part with the preferably should, as a part to the must, as opposed to the must, or, or whatever, I, again, I, I can't call it up what, what actually went, went out.
Let me, uh.
Yes, sir.
Give a little history here. Having been on the board for twelve years, I recall a previous board member years ago who felt very offended that other board members were finding out information before this board member was, or that this board member did not find out. And as a result of that, we adopted the procedure in this district that when communication was sent to a board member, it was going to be sent to all board members to eliminate the possibility of the perception that one board member was getting inside information that all board members were not getting. That's what this is aimed at.
So what you're telling me is that anytime you, you, you guys get a piece of information from a staff, staff member, you immediately share that with the entire board?
When we ask for something, then.
They're supposed to.
There was a different board member.
No, no, I said, I said, when you're contacted by a staff member, you immediately share that with, with superintendent and, and every, every.
Well, it's not for us to solve. It's of.
That's not, that's not what I said.
You forward it to the superintendent, and this is a different board member.
Every communication you get, every communication you get.
I do, I do.
Forgive me, forgive me, forgive me, that, that is, that is not what this policy was designed to do. It was designed to require the staff member to share that information.
With all.
If board members get it and send it around, you've got an immediate sunshine violation. Do not do that. So, I, I want to be sure with cameras rolling, you hear, do not do that. If, what this says is staff members who want to communicate directly with school board members should send it, communications to all board members.
Mrs. Harris?
This was, I, i, it's different. It's not that you can't say hi or talk or even converse with people. It's, and, and like you, I know the history, there were board members that were going around the superintendent's back asking for reports and detailed information. Then they'd come to the board, work session with all this information, blindside the rest of the board members that, about an issue, and then the superintendent's staff also, if they have an issue or a problem, unless it's breaking the law and they're doing something criminal that, that they have to report. If they have an issue, they should go up the, they don't go behind the superintendent's back and come to board members because the superintendent is in charge of the staff. And that's what these policies were meant to do. An individual board member is not suppo, I'm not supposed to go to Rob Davis and say, Rob, I want to know what you're spending on, on all of your tires, or, or, or ask him to get me all of this information, and then I come and I say, look at this. If I want that information, I go to the superintendent and say, I want to know this information. There were board members that were tying up individual, the superintendent's people on producing hours of, of work. Only for that board member, and that's what this is about.
That, that's, I don't, I don't, I think that issue's been resolved. I don't think that's an issue, I think the, the bigger question is, what if a staff member has a concern, a problem, a question, and they want to talk to that, talk about that to their representative, their elected official? Do we have the right to say you can't do that? I, I think that's.
No, 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 that's, no.
You do not have the right to tell them that.
Well, that's what the policy says, or, I mean, or no, sorry, it, it, it doesn't say that, actually, it, it, it doesn't say it's like that, but that's certainly what the summary of, 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 of the policy said.
I think, I think, I think there's a perception in the community that, that the.
Hey, the light, the light goes on.
Told our employees that they, that, that they cannot talk to their board members.
Yes.
That's insane.
Yeah.
Well, I agree.
That's the clarification I think Mr. Townsend's asking for.
Okay, I miss, it's okay.
I don't even think that was the intent, I'm, I'm just, it's just what, but people.
Right, but that's the perception.
I think, I think we're all on board, we don't want to be.
We're all on the same page. What do we need to do?
We, we'll figure that out.
Okay, all right.
It's, 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 it's an administrative thing, it's not related, it's just.
Yeah, and, and again, I think we're all clear that, that board members shouldn't be going directly to staff for requesting information and stuff like that.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so, any other board comments? Yes, ma'am, Mrs. Cunningham.
Okay, so, um, a couple of things. I don't know about the rest of you, but, uh, there's been a lot of changes on the web, and, um, first of all, I am, for the first time in my years on the board, getting marketing materials that have nothing to do with education sent to my home, and I'm very unhappy about that. I don't know if we're giving out our lists, and it particularly says my name, Polk County School Board, and my home address. So I have never, ever, other than from higher institutions, I get that, you know what I'm saying, I get all the invitations for all the stuff, but this is for a spa. I've never been to a spa, I don't know what spas do, uh, it's not like I would have signed up for something, I don't do that kind of stuff, and that really bothers me. I just don't feel like we get enough stuff in our personal lives, I just don't feel like we should, I should be receiving another piece of junk mail routed through the Polk County School Board. This is my third one, I waited for the third one and then decided I would bring it to the board. So I don't know if the rest of you are experiencing that, I'm, I'm, I will hand it over to whoever, and you can figure it out and why. I don't want to receive marketing, um, materials like that.
Have they all been from the same spa? Or have they been from different places?
Different places. Nobody got the October special? Okay.
But Dean and I have said it this year.
I mean, I, I, I keep getting clothes.
You get clothes?
He gets supplies.
Hey!
Hand, hand delivered, do, do my.
Really? Oh, gosh, okay, I'll trade you, you like spas?
No. I'm not playing, touching me.
Anyways, um, so that's number one, I want my name off the marketing stuff. Secondly, um, I know we're getting this Office three sixty that reviews daily emails. I personally, I don't know if this is public knowledge, but I'm going to say it now, I don't have a school board computer. I gave mine back when Pat McManus was still our executive secretary, because it was needed in one of our schools. So I, the only method I have is my phone, uh, which is fine, and it works great, but to that end, there's, every, so much stuff is going into spam. I'm trying to figure out, is this three sixty going to go away after six months or three months or something, to where every day I'm not having to stop and check those to make sure that something important is not going to my spam folder? And if it is, because you know, you can click on, it's not junk mail and blah, 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 I just think that needs to be discussed, because I had no idea that was happening, and I've missed emails from people as this transition is taking place. And then secondly, it says on every email you get that's outside of the district, while we work so hard on, on our, to say, this is from outside the district, and then I get this kind of crap in the mail. So I don't know what's going on, I don't know if there's a timeline for this, it is just taking up a lot of my personal time. So, uh, it's just annoying, and I'm, so I'm bringing it up.
Can I add to what you're saying?
Sure.
They also, on the three sixty, that everything's being quarantined now.
Yeah, that's right.
Wendy and I got to the Central Florida School Board Coalition meeting and didn't have any of the minutes that they had sent out, nothing from the last meeting.
Yep.
There's two really cool presentations they did yesterday that they're going to send to us. They were supposed to send them last night, and I still haven't gotten them, and they're not in the quarantine folder. But she even looked up, you know, this is, this is when I sent it, you're on the list, your name spelled correctly, and it's not coming anywhere to my inbox. Or quarantine, or spam, or anywhere. Um, so I think there may be some major issues going on with email that need to be addressed. So, I don't.
Ask that to the superintendent. Any other?
I do have some things from.
Okay.
I, and my personal computer's being cracked last night, so my notes are not with me, but I have the agenda, so we can go off of that. But they, we had two presentations, the first was, um, the Volo program, which is an app that deals with security. It was very impressive, basically, every staff member has access to it. It's, can do anything from calling the nurse to, I'm on the P E field and need backup, any, any of those types of things. Dr. Aix has the flash drive they gave us that has all of the information on it. He was more responsible than I was, so.
Ours will do.
But it's, um, it was very cool, and it's very similar to U F's Safe Data Program that they integrated with the blue safe lights. So I don't know if that's something that we want to look into. The other one was Leadership Orange, which is their Orange County Public Schools Leadership Program, did a presentation. And what they're doing is incredible, they have thirty to thirty-five people in each class, it's very similar to a Leadership Winter Haven or Leadership Lakeland, Leadership Polk, but it only focuses on the school district. Uh, their staff members are not allowed to participate, it has to be people outside, they're required to live in Orange County. And it's just to get the community engaged in, this is what's really going in at our schools. They spend the first days, an overview of, you know, this is how many schools we have, this is how many students we have, that type of thing. The very, they meet from eight thirty to nine, they have a breakfast, nine to twelve, they do different things, and then they always have a hands-on activity after lunch. Their first session, the hands-on activity is creating a school calendar, and they're given, you have to have this many days, you have to have, these days are required to have off by law, and it's, they were just talking about how, you know, once you make people do that, they realize how hard it is, and there's a few less complaints about, what do you mean, I have to give up two days at Thanksgiving, or I have to come back Tuesdays after Memorial Day, those types of things. The second one, they do transportation, food services, they actually get to drive a school bus on their course, which a couple of the people in the room had gone through it and talked about how cool it was, and that they would never be able to drive a school bus. And so they do a lot of different cool things for, it's nine sessions, they run, I think, what was it, September through April, and then they graduate in May. Um, but it's once a month from eight thirty to two, and it's a really cool program that would be great for our community relations. They have retirees participating, they have incoming parents, they have current parents and volunteers, community members, so. I would really, I keep looking at Rachel, because I know it's under you, but I would re.
It's the me that presented.
I would really like for us to do something like that.
Okay.
That's, that was my, that one.
Yes, sir, Mr. Harris, thank you.
In the interest of improving transparency, uh, when we go to our school district's webpage, which is much improved, and you scroll over to Help Me To, and you go down to Calendars. That's what the public is looking at to see what events are taking place in Polk County Public Schools, except board meetings don't show up, work sessions don't show up.
Okay.
This is F T E week, that shows up, but the fact that we're meeting this morning doesn't show up. I've had it suggested that maybe putting board meetings and work sessions on the public's calendar.
Okay.
Would be a positive thing.
To, to pile on that, that's, there, there, there is a place on, on the hub where the broadcast, which I appreciate that, that you guys have put the broadcast there, that might be a thing to put right there by the calendars, to, like, like, sort of there.
If you go to the board member page, there is the, the calendar for board member meetings and the information on the broadcasts, yeah.
But I don't know that the public would think the, that we would ever have multiple calendars.
You want the meetings on the public facing.
I don't, I think the public will view this as, this is the school district's calendar.
This is the calendar.
All right, we'll get those dates on there for you.
And having a, a calendar for employees, I totally get, because there's a lot of other issues, but this is the public's calendar, so.
And our retreat, was our retreat on there?
Well, it's the retreat on there.
Somebody asked me about that.
That was what date, the twenty-fifth?
Yes.
Uh, nope, retreat wasn't on there. We had, well, last month, on the eighteenth, you had the work session and the special board meeting listed, but not the twenty-fifth, but. Seems sometimes they're on there, sometimes they're not.
Okay, any other board member comments? So, Mr. Bridges, at one time, we had talked about looking at a policy that ensured that if a former employee, if we're doing business with a former employee, or they're, a company they're working for, that, that the board would be apprised of that, do you recall?
Yes, I, I remember, I remember the conversation. I don't know that it's, it's gone any further, it was so sort of similar to lobbying.
Yeah, exactly.
Thing, would you, would you like for me to pursue that further?
Yes, please.
I'd be happy to.
We, I think we talked about that, and we talked about a policy, much like lobbying.
Sure, and what, what, the first thing I will do is, is, is my habit, is I will, I will reach out to the, the other sixty-six districts and see if anybody has adopted such a thing that we can use as a model, which is always more efficient if somebody's got it and it's working. You know, borrow the good stuff, I would never plagiarize, but I'm, I'm good at borrowing, um, and, and, and go from there.
If you give them credit, it's not plagiarism, right?
Yes, sir. Yeah, I'd be happy to.
So, thank you, Mr. Bridges, so just a quick update on, on the sales tax initiative. We've run into a few snags, we, there's quite a few snags. Uh, Spectrum won't run the message from the district, um, so we're, they, their legal department says that if, that because we're addressing an item on the ballot, it must have a disclaimer on it, a paid political disclaimer, and we can't do that by state law. So we can't, we can't run our messages to Spectrum, we're working, we're working on another approach, and the superintendent and I are going to meet this afternoon to work on another approach, hopefully we'll do maybe a social media blitz with, with some newspaper advertising, um, but we'll be talking about that this afternoon. We, the signs, you'll see, you'll start seeing the signs out around the county, if you need signs, contact Alice Hunt, she's got plenty of signs for you. You'll start seeing those out about. You'll start seeing those out and about, and, and then I think the PAC is going to run some, some robo-call, they're going to do some robo-calling to just, because everything we have right now is very factual. It doesn't ask for anyone to vote. So we need the, we, I think we, the PAC believes that they need to do the robo-call and ask people to vote for it. So that's what that piece will be about. So that's kind of an update of where we are, you probably will see a lot of stuff happening in the next few weeks, obviously, we've got the elections coming up, so we've gotten good response all over the county, everybody understands the importance of it, had a good meeting last night. So that's, that's kind of an update on that.
Can I add?
Yes, ma'am.
Mm-hmm, to that, the meeting we had in Davenport last week was awesome, very well attended. Signs are out there, I will say, signs are very vague. Because of all the writing that's on there, people are like, what? So I know that there is a group, concerned citizens in Northeast Polk, that are working on doing a social media thing with something as simple as, you know, please, half-cent, half-cent sales tax renewal. The key, which a lot of people are saying, drive it home, this is a renewal, this is not an added new tax. So just as you speak to groups, we'll be speaking to another group tomorrow evening. So, yeah, we just need to tell as many people as possible that it is a renewal, and while the sales tax signs are good, they're vague, needs to be more descriptive. So I think the social media piece needs to address that.
Yes, exactly, and I think that the, the idea originally was that we would have funding to, to be more specific. It was kind of like this, the concern was if you tried to explain, vote and explain it, it would even be more crowded. And so they were trying to keep it very simple to get people's attention, and then use the, the messages to get them to vote.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Just a closing comment, I'd just like to say thanks and a shout out to the Ledger's publisher and editorial board for their support. That was very much appreciated and very timely, thank you.
Yep, absolutely. They, they did a wonderful job with that piece, couldn't agree more. Any other comments from the board members? Yes, ma'am.
I just have one more reminder that tomorrow is the Celebrity Lip Sync Battle. Mr. Hill is an incredible backup dancer. We walked off like an hour and a half to learn the dance Saturday morning, and he learned it in thirty minutes.
We're clear who's the backup dancer.
I mean, obviously, technically, he's standing in the back, but he steals the show. So, but it's tomorrow night at Theater Winter Haven, six P M. It's going to be a blast, so.
Okay.
That's the last time I'll know, I promise.
Board member, that's one of my your attention. Every year, we all, we always approve the holiday days for us to give employees for Thanksgiving, winter break, and spring break. That memo is getting ready to go out, but I'm going to send it to you also, you have it.
Okay.
Make you aware.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay, any, any other business for the board? These meetings adjourned, thank you.